This regular meeting of the Board of Education in Fairfield for October 23rd, 2018. Present is Ms. Pittco, Ms. Lieper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Acer, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli, and Mr. Peterson. I'll introduce the students separately because this is their first meeting. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we start the year off now that we have students with us, and so welcome. On the agenda, you'll see that Fairfield Ward has their traditional two students here, Mr. Rivera and Ms. Solari. And so, Solari, I pronounced that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so welcome. And we have three students for Ludlow, and that's because all three students were qualified, but we only have two chairs. No, they, among the three of them, they have agreed to cover the Board of Education on some kind of a rotational basis. So Mr. Holtz and Ms. Phillips is here tonight, and we look forward to hearing them. Every year as we start, a lot of times you talk about what's happening on a social scene and an academic scene and a sports scene, and I always welcome you to make any comments about any of our business items that you may want to. We won't wait you, force you to wait till the end of the meeting when that item comes up, and so feel free that as part of your reports, if there's an item that you wanted to just share your thoughts with the board, you'd be more than welcome to do so. Of course, you would be more than welcome to sit through our entire meeting as well, but I know that you have homework and other student duties. So, welcome. And having said that, let me ask our two representatives from Ludlow to give a report to us.
Good evening. My name is Michael Holtz, and I will be reporting for Fairfield Ludlow. One of the most welcoming surprises that we've had so far this year is the success of the FLHS football team led by Coach Mitch Ross. Now in his second year, the team now five and one has shown great improvement during this time. And as usual, our boys soccer team continues its tradition of success with another winning season of 10, 4, and 2. Led by captains Chris Obuchi and Nico Rulo, the team is currently ranked fourth out of 17 teams in the FCIAC. This is enough to earn them a spot in the playoffs, which will begin next week. The highlight last week was the annual Ludlow-Ward game, which took place at Ward High School. To raise awareness for breast cancer, Ludlow students and parents were encouraged to wear pink with the high school selling pink shirts to raise money for breast cancer. I'm happy to report that the stands were packed with fans from both schools. The game was very exciting, ending in a 0-0 tie. Girls' soccer also played the same night at the Pinkout and ended a beating Ward 3-1. I'm happy to share that the girls' game retained as many fans in the stands. This was a very exciting game. Highlights are available on the Falcon Sports Network. Despite their winning season of 8, 7, and 1, the team lost to Wilton last night, which knocks them out of the FCIAC. Girls' volleyball is enjoying another successful season as well. They're current, they currently have an 11-4 record and are sixth in the FCIAC. This puts them in a good shape for playoffs as well, where the top eight teams qualify. Last Friday, they celebrated their senior night, recognizing the five seniors Lily Traum, Jessica Takami, Molly Cronin, Molly Reynolds, and Melena Constantino. In addition, on September 26th, FLHS held its annual activity fair to encourage student participation in Ludlow's many clubs and activities. The fair is for all students, including excited freshmen, to visit and explore extracurricular opportunities enjoyed during weekly scheduled activity periods. Usually held outside, this year's activity fair was held in both gyms due to weather. The fair enables students to sign up for activities that they are interested in, ranging from the Make-A-Wish Club, Circle of Friends, Red Cross, and so many more. Students can be as much or as little involved as they want, but must come to the meetings regularly and participate in two events per club throughout the year in order to get credit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Ms. Phillips, do you have additional comments?
All right. A few weeks ago, the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders all sat for the PSAT. Freshmen and sophomores found it useful to preview the SAT and sort of gauge where they stand in terms of, you know, applying for colleges and taking the real thing. So everyone really thought it was useful, and it does hold a weight, you know, for juniors for scholarships. So we're all looking forward to see how we did on that. More recently, Ludlow held a week-long anti-bullying event that stressed the impact of bullying and what we can do to stop it. The student body responded positively with a very high attendance and a kind of noticeable change in attitude. And in terms of upcoming events, Ludlow will be doing its play A Wilder Time, which is an original like from our theater department in which we are merging a kind of two plays by this writer Wilder, and come see it in the winter.
Thank you very much. Do you, do we have any questions for our representatives from Ludlow, Fairfield Ludlow? Having none, so who from Ward wants to start?
All right. Well, first things first, we've had a busy start in the fall. Our fall sports teams were taking off and had some interesting seasons. Actually, I just came back from the senior night at Ward Field Hockey. It's great going there, representing our seniors, seeing everybody out there. And aside from welcoming our freshmen, the biggest event was held in early October when the NIASK visiting team invited to evaluate our school came over a two-day period. They toured the building and met with teachers, parents, administrators, and sports staff. They also met with central office and the curriculum leadership. At the end of the two days, they presented to Mr. Ebling and the steering committee their commendations and recommendations, which should be made public in a few weeks. On Friday, during homeroom, the chairman of the visiting committee addressed our school and spoke about how great of a school we had and how welcoming we'd been, or acronym. And with that, I'd like to hand it off to my partner, Ms. Solari.
Like JR said, we had a very strong start to the year. Our classes are now in full swing, and we've had some pep rallies to welcome our school. And we've had several, several Ward versus Ludlow competitions, as many of you know. And actually, just last weekend, Ward participated in a physics Olympiad where they placed third overall out of 49 teams, and were actually the first public school out of all the other ones competing. Last month, looking back on last month, we're, all of Ward participated in a summer symposium where they talked about summer books they read and other assigned topics. And looking forward, this week, our performing groups start with their concert series, and this Friday is our spirit day for our school. And looking even farther ahead, our homecoming game is this Saturday, and our homecoming dance is followed for juniors and seniors that evening, on Saturday evening. And on November 7th, next month, we will be hosting a forum for ninth-grade students revolving around underage drinking and risky behavior for their parents as well.
Very good report. Thank you very much. Any questions for our representatives from Ward? Ms. Max and Cunnelli?
Two questions. First, Ms. Solari, I was wondering if you knew anybody who was on that award-winning physics team?
JR was actually on the award-winning team.
We have such esteemed company here. Thank you. Congratulations again. And then secondly, I was wondering to both, to all four representatives, I was wondering if you could provide just a little personal commentary on the new aspect of this school year in terms of everybody having the Chromebooks, if you've heard commentary from your classmates or any reactions to differences in the classroom?
Certainly made us more productive. Definitely gives us the opportunity to have pretty much all our classes be participating in more technologically sophisticated work, and having access to our work throughout the day certainly has helped reading a lot of Shakespeare in English class. I can say that, so teachers are enjoying it too.
I think adding on it just helps for when we're all in the same classroom and on the same page. Everyone's able to be looking at the same document or through Google Classroom, so it just is kind of more efficient for teachers and students to be on the same level and really gets us going.
Comments from Ludlow?
The Chromebooks have certainly made work a lot more efficient and easier for everybody, in which case students can just easily access their work quickly and easily instead of having to log on to a computer and having to just sit there and wait for it to log on, which has happened to me quite a lot in the past. So I was very happy once the Chromebooks came because I can just quickly log in and get right to work without waiting.
I've seen in my own experience that classes run a lot more smoothly. Like, we don't have to, you know, book a computer room and go through that whole process. Instead, we can work in the classroom, and it's very, very efficient in how our teachers can, you know, streamline documents and resources. So we're moving at a much faster pace, but we're also learning just as much, if not more. So it's a really great resource. I've heard like positive reviews across, you know, the whole school.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, thank you very much. Again, you're welcome to stay as long as you wish or head on to other more important things. We're now at the time of the agenda for public comment, and this is for agenda items only. For those of you who may be new, you know that we have a limit of three minutes, and so if there's any public comment on agenda items only, first come, first served, please come forward and address the board and state your name and address. Nobody, so we'll move on to presentations. Thank you very much. First, PTA recognition. This is an annual event, and I'll ask Mrs. Gerber to make comments.
Okay, I, can I just get a show of hands to see how many PTA reps are actually here in the audience tonight? Oh, good. Awesome. All right, this is our annual recognition of the PTA reps to the Board of Education. This is a really helpful and important responsibility spoken by someone who did it herself for many years, but it is really helpful because you're providing a great conduit between your individual school's PTA and the Board of Education. And I will say, one downside of Fair TV is that it provides service so that people can never leave their living room and they can watch Board of Ed meetings. So we don't see as many of our Board of Ed reps out here at meetings as we used to before the days of Fair TV, but obviously from emails coming from schools and things like that, the Board of Ed reps are still busy at work, just doing it in a different way. But those of you who are here tonight, we're really glad you're here, and if you could just come up and introduce yourself and the school that you represent. Thank you.
So don't be shy. Come forward.
Couldn't see behind me.
And if you would, stay, stay up once you're finished making comments.
Dale Resnick, Jennings.
Jennings. Thank you. Who else?
Hi, Joy Ross, PTAC.
Katie Flynn, North Stratfield.
Stay up just for a second. North Stratfield, thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Trabuco, PTAC.
Who else is here? So I'd like to join Mrs. Gerber in saying thank you for your service, and as you get to other PTA meetings, please let them know that the Board of Education, all nine of us greatly appreciate the work that you put into making this school district better. You are the eyes and ears, if you will, in 17 different schools, and that's a valuable service to us. So thank you very much, and you all have our emails, so I'm sure that we will hear from you from time to time. Any board members wish to make any other comments? Mr. Peterson?
I just very quickly want to say that it was many years ago that I got sucked into being the Board of Ed rep for the PTA at Stratfield, and here I am now. So be careful.
The minutes will reflect that Mr. Peterson said that many years ago he had the honor of serving. Any other comments? If not, okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the student data report, and I see that we have a presentation, and so the front table will have to readjust.
Good evening. My name is Mike Cummings. I am the chief academic officer for the Fairfield Public Schools. Our presentation tonight is around student data. Our focus this evening, though, will be more around, rather than the traditional data that you see collected in spreadsheets, Excel spreadsheets, we're going to look at the work we do in response to data, how we use data to inform instruction, how we use data to make decisions around professional learning, and two of our present, two, we have three presentations tonight, two of them will really focus on the work, two also of formative assessment, whether that's student work or other data diagnostic tests we give students informs our instruction. The third presentation, third component of tonight's presentation, will be around a new model of data that the state is actively now using, and we want to make sure that the board is aware of it, how to use it, and so that you can, because it'll become certainly part of our conversation going forward. Our objective tonight, we're going to present the work that leads to a response to summative data presented to the public. We're going to describe the use of formative assessment data as we look at the elementary SRBI process. We're going to demonstrate the potential of formative assessment data and student goal setting through a middle school world language case study. We're going to discuss growth data and its impact on the work of the Fairfield Public Schools, and we're going to review next steps to raise student and school performance. As we look, as we go through the presentation tonight, I'd like to just keep these questions in mind. What is the work of the Fairfield Public Schools instructional staff to continually improve student achievement? That work occurs at all of our schools, in all of our classrooms, as well as in central office. How do we utilize data to plan lessons to impact student learning? And how do we continue to expand the capacity of staff to identify and use the best student information for planning and instruction? It's important here to reiterate, and I will say it as often as I'm allowed, but essentially the idea is that the data only serves to, to have us ask questions. We ask questions about the data, and in those questions, in responding to those questions, we make decisions about how we improve our work. The data does not provide the answers. It only helps raise the questions. Just a quick review of some of our successes from the past school year. Overall, our percentage of students achieving goal at or above, excuse me, achieving goal or at or above goal on the SBA has increased over the past three, eight years. And this is a, this is a grade level average. This is all the grades combined essentially over the past three years. I want to raise here this issue or point out here this issue of raising the floor. One of the things we were most pleased with this year is increasing our grade three SBA performance. And I want to point out that the SBA, the Smarter Balance Assessment, as well as the PSAT and SAT at the high school level, it's important to keep in mind that those tests are aligned to the common core curriculum in English, Language Arts, and Math. And so there, our student success on those is important because it shows that we are aligning our instruction to the expectations of curriculum, the curricular standards. And that's why we use these as benchmarks for our work. So when I talk about raising the floor, in grade three, our ELA performance went up seven points, 67 to 74 percent, and our math performance went up four points. And we, I point this out because we worked a lot with the elementary leadership team as a focus area for this last year, and it paid dividends in the work we did. We implemented consistent and meaningful SRBI processes at 11 elementary schools, and Osborne-Hill is here tonight to give you one representative of how that works. And more students are taking AP courses in the district. In just one year, we increased from 672 to 739, which is quite an accomplishment in a district to essentially open the gate like that and to continue to open the gate. As always, we have challenges to the principles of instructional improvement. There are things that get in our way, as you well know. Certainly, the size of our district has a great benefit, but also working across as many classrooms and schools as we do, there's variability imposed by that, staffing changes, people changing grade levels, teachers coming in and out of the profession, the needs of students and staff. We always have to keep in mind that at the core of our work, our, as human beings and people, and we have to be responsive to what people are going through at any given time. Certainly, we know that outside events always echo within our classrooms, and we have to be constantly, our teachers are constantly putting that task first in their work. Our culture, our expectations that all students can learn, all capital letters, and fulfill the mission of the Fairfield Public Schools. Budget priorities, how do we use our money to its best advantage to raise the level of student achievement? And of course, changes in state and national expectations are always in the back of our mind and sometimes too often in the front of our mind when we're trying to plan improvement. You've seen this graph before, but essentially this is the improvement process, how it really looks. We are the wiggly line, always moving forward, but they, given the variabilities that we encounter, it is never as smooth as we would like or hope. But this is what makes it good and fun work to do. So while you're reading that quote, and you'll read it quick, I know, I'm going to call up the Osborne-Hill team led by Principal David Hudson to talk you through the SRBI process so you get a sense of how we changed things last year and the benefits we've seen in that change.
Good evening, and thank you for welcoming us this evening. Our team from Osborne-Hill is looking forward to sharing with you some information, stories, and outcomes from our implementation of the district's SRBI process. Here with me tonight is our elementary program facilitator, Anne Marie Galgano, also kindergarten teacher, Deanna Renzulli, language arts specialist, Paris Gavi Runtos, second-grade teacher, Jill Miller, and language arts specialist, Colleen Morello. As a way to begin, we will start with where the SRBI process fits into the larger picture. The triangle on the screen depicts the levels of intervention in our scientifically research-based intervention process, SRBI, and early intervention planning, EIP. It begins with the instructional core in the classroom for all students, with whole-class and small-group instruction by the classroom teacher. This is the segment we will be focused on this evening for our SRBI process. If students are not making appropriate growth or keeping up with grade-level peers, they will move up through the tiers of intervention until their growth is steep enough to catch up with peers. Individual student goals are developed and progress monitored closely to determine the effectiveness of the tiered instruction. Our SRBI process targets the needs of students in the classroom and allows classroom teachers to collaboratively develop instructional strategies with grade-level partners, our language arts specialists, our elementary program facilitator, and principal. Thus, the major purpose of the SRBI process is to plan focused Tier One core instruction to be implemented by the classroom teacher based on individual student needs. Through this, we impact more students earlier and hope to lower the number of students requiring tiered pull-out intervention. You will see in our upcoming examples that the process has had other positive impacts in our school. It has built up our collaboration between grade-level partners. It has also strengthened the alignment and cohesion of our curriculum and pacing guides, our coaching and consult work, as well as our grade-level work sessions and school professional development. All of this is based on our assessment data and student work. We will have more information on these other and other positive impacts after our classroom examples. Before we present some classroom examples, Anne Marie is going to provide some specifics on what SRBI looks like prior to Tier Two intervention and what the meetings entail.
Thank you. In describing the SRBI process, we'd like to highlight the following items. It's a framework that is data-driven, child-centered, and it allows us to make decisions about high-priority instructional moves. Oop, there goes the microphone. There we go. Okay. It allows us to make very decisions about high-priority instructional moves that we can make in our schools to impact high achievement every single day. So we begin the process with our universal screenings. Universal screenings are assessments that, as they indicate, all students take. These assessments include our STAR computerized testing for math, reading, and early literacy. They're conducted at intervals across the school year to help us determine our students' progress towards mastery of standards. In some cases, these universal screenings may trigger additional diagnostics that need to be given so that we can drill down to specific skills. Once these universal screenings are completed, teachers have time to dig into the data and prepare for our SRBI meeting. At the SRBI meeting, there are several things that are discussed, and these are grade-level meetings. First of all, we talk about class celebrations. We look at areas where we can directly link our adult actions back to student success. We may be looking at a particular skill, but we also look at certain things such as engagement. What are we doing to increase the engagement of students? What are we doing to increase their reading behaviors, for example? We'll also next look at an area of focus for the class. This is an area of high-leverage next step, or a high-leverage next step that will impact the largest number of students. We consider upcoming instructional things to emphasize or adjustments that we need to make. We then look at individuals who have flagged on these universal screenings, and again, we make decisions, develop an instructional plan for differentiation, we collaborate on effective strategies. There are many experts in the room at an SRBI meeting, and the collaboration is key. The next part of the process is where teachers make decisions based on the data. We can either say that it, at this time, there's no concern for the student and that the teacher will continue to progress monitor as they normally would. We may plan for a coach to go in and consult with the teacher. Perhaps there is an instructional move or a small group structure that will directly impact the student need, and you're going to hear a lot more about that from our case studies. In some cases, there are enough flags that we feel that the student needs to go directly into an EIP meeting. That EIP meeting relates to what David was speaking about, the different tiers. So that may be the result of an SRBI meeting as well. And now, Deanna and Paris Gavi are going to highlight how this works and how it looks in kindergarten.
So this is a snapshot of the SRBI process in the kindergarten, in a kindergarten classroom. The kindergarten students in my classroom were assessed in the fall using district-determined universal screens for lowercase letter identification, consonant letter sounds, and concepts of print. This assessment was administered to all kindergarten students by our team of language arts specialists, instructional improvement teacher, and kindergarten teachers who were trained in administration of the assessment. This ensured a consistent screening process. As part of the SRBI process, my grade-level members and I worked with our building team of language arts specialists, principal, and instructional improvement teacher to review the assessment data. Together, we looked at the whole-class trends and determined areas of need based on what the the data was indicating. We also analyzed the data to note which students flagged in one or more areas based on district expectations. We used the data in concert with close classroom observations to plan for the next step in focused early literacy instruction. Our team made decisions based on this information and planned instructional strategies to meet those whole class needs. Out of 20 students in my class, five students flagged as needing additional support with identifying letter names and consonant sounds. These five students received whole group instruction as well as differentiated small group instruction and individual lessons in the classroom. All five students were progress monitored with frequent screenings for letter ID and letter sound correspondence. Peres Kavi provided collaborative professional support in the classroom with weekly consulting and coaching sessions to help directly impact Tier One instruction.
Together, we looked at lesson structure, pacing, materials, and resources to effectively target letter ID and letter sound correspondence. The district provided early literacy professional development with grade level colleagues. In our building, we also had common planning time and work session days to gather ideas for effective Tier One instruction. We planned across many language arts areas such as shared reading, word study, interactive writing, early literacy activities, and small group guided reading. Deanna and I continued to review data together during the consulting sessions. We reflected on small group and individual student progress in applying the strategies and skills. Of the five students that Deanna mentioned, three students progressed to goal and the support faded. And two students were still not making progress and supports for those students were increased, going to Tier Two.
Our SRBI team continued important conversations identifying new strategies to further support skill development and progress. Peres Kavi coached me in specific intervention strategies to use for small group lessons in the classroom. In addition, Peres Kavi added weekly small group sessions where she directly instructed to students. Communication with home was ongoing in order to explain strategies and progress support.
So after six weeks, our team met to review the new data and discuss progress. The students did make progress with the original goal from the universal assessment. Based on the benchmark, the decision was then determined to add a new strategy. Consultation and collaborative teaching continued, and more frequent intervention sessions were added, both in Deanna's classroom as well as with my instruction. Additional time was also added in the class with paraprofessionals who were trained in early literacy strategies by myself and Colleen. Matching the classroom strategies and techniques between school and home was also key, which Deanna mentioned. The home communication continued and home practice was offered. Students were monitored with running record assessments as per district guidelines.
As a classroom teacher, I felt continually supported during the SRBI process. Our collaborative approach strengthened our common goal in developing clear areas of instructional focus, moving all students to the next level of instruction and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear what SRBI looks like in Grade Two.
Good evening. Where Deanna and Peres Kavi spoke to the process as making adjustments for whole-class instruction, we are going to speak more to what SRBI means in regard to individual and group instruction. In the fall, we had administered multiple universal screens and assessments, and when looking at the data, two students flagged in my class as a concern. Student one performed poorly on the computer-based assessments, however, scored at or above expectation on the other classroom assessments. Through the SRBI meeting, we looked at student work samples and felt as a team that this student was not a concern at this time, but we would continue to monitor her, taking note of any test-taking behaviors in the future that may have impacted the score. Student two did not flag on the universal screen, however, was performing below expectation on the classroom assessments. I brought my concerns to an SRBI meeting and spoke about his classroom performance as we reviewed classroom work samples along with the other data obtained. And we discussed the factors that may have explained his struggles. Overall focus and attention was one of them, weak organization, and poor spelling. Together, we pinpointed a focus for instruction and decided that a consult with the language arts specialist was a good place to start.
Together, Jill and I discussed ways to support the student's organization in writing with the use of graphic organizers. We introduced and modeled ways for him to organize his thoughts and ideas for writing as well as showing some strategies for brainstorming ideas in order to help him get started. We utilized his writer's notebook to create lists of various ideas that he could refer to when needed. Once he had a plan and started writing, we saw that he was also having difficulty writing words that he didn't know how to spell correctly, and therefore, he had great difficulty reading back his own writing. This was very frustrating for him and actually deterred him from wanting to write and/or writing at a very slow pace with little production. We needed to show him strategies for this and therefore began
Incorporating. I think I was going to drop the mic. Just a little too early.
We needed to show him strategies for this and therefore began incorporating teaching tools such as sound and letter boxes with the use of a whiteboard during writing time as well as the use of a practice page. We watched for points of difficulty in both his reading and writing with spelling patterns and taught directly into those spelling concepts during small group instruction. We also found that the opportunity to reflect on all student work during the SRBI process allowed us to identify other students in the class that would benefit from similar instruction and therefore included others in the small group.
So in conjunction with the academic support, strategies to help with focus and attention were put in place in the classroom. For example, a small privacy office was set up for the student, and the student and I set up a daily production goal for his pieces each day. These strategies proved successful for the student, and all of this continued with weekly consults with Colleen to discuss strategies and progress of the student over time. And over the course of a few months, I noticed the student was finally settling in. He was becoming more confident, and I could see that work production was increasing, as was his assessment scores. He was more independently using the strategies modeled in our small group instruction, and he was also beginning to set goals for himself in the areas of reading and writing now that he could see what strategies were most helpful to him. We continued to discuss this student and at one point decided to move the consult to an as-needed basis, and it became clear that the supports given in the classroom were sufficient and effective. And the student ended up leaving Grade Two, meeting the goals in both reading and writing, and I felt supported throughout this process.
So we want to make sure that we highlight for you how SRBI has positively changed our practice. First, the process allows us to celebrate the adult actions, and it encourages replication so we don't just pat ourselves on the back and say, "Nice job." We say, "How can I make this work for every student in my class, not just this year, but next year and the year after that," so that our best practice can grow. Secondly, it strengthens our team collaboration. And when we talk about our team, it includes parents, as Deanna gave in her example. We want to make sure that we are working together for the best interest of the students and the highest achievement that we can reach, and we're not alone. And that's the really nice thing about this process is that as teachers, as Deanna said, and Jill as well, they felt supported, and that's important. Also, we're not just using one data point to make decisions about students. For example, when Jill said her student did not flag on the assessments, it didn't take away her ability to talk about that student and to make decisions based on what she was seeing every day in the classroom, which is really, really important.
We've also been able to respond earlier to student needs as well as respond to a greater number of students. Differentiated instruction has been implemented by the classroom teachers, keeping students with their peers for the day. If students need to enter EIP Tier Two, we already have a good handle on what they need so that appropriate instruction can be implemented. The trends we have determined based on assessments and student work have enabled us to support grade-level teams through focused work sessions with our language arts specialists. The trends and findings from our SRBI process have also helped us prioritize the use of our resources of staffing, materials, and time. This is an exciting process as we build from individual student needs to trends of small groups of students to whole class trends and then grade-level trends. We are finding that multiple grade levels will at times have similar strengths and needs. Our leadership team is planning to use these larger school findings to plan school-wide professional learning when appropriate. We're going to go back to the big picture for one more moment. As a reminder that the SRBI process we have focused on tonight happened in the Tier One instructional core with the hope it would impact students' learning early and lessen the number of students requiring Tier Two pullout intervention. Keeping this in mind, we will now look at the data from the last two years. You'll see on the left side, before implementation, our 2016-2017 number of students who entered Tier Two intervention at each grade level, K1 and 2. The right side shows our 2017-2018 numbers with the SRBI process in place. The middle column shows the number of students who were under the umbrella of the coaching and consult work in each grade level. The right column shows the number of those students who ended up moving into Tier Two. In kindergarten, for example, nine students were in the coaching and consult level of the SRBI process, and of those, five went into Tier Two intervention. That's down from nine the previous year. In Grade One, 12 students were in the coaching and consult level, but of those, only three required Tier Two intervention, down from six from 2016-17. Finally, in Grade Two, six students were in the coaching and consult level, and of those, zero students entered EIP Tier Two intervention, and that's down from four the previous year. So with fewer students entering EIP Tier Two, our language arts specialists are able to spend more time with teachers in classrooms, supporting instruction. The SRBI process has allowed us to reach more students earlier with a more focused response and has helped increase the teaching and learning in our classrooms. On behalf of the Osborne Hill team, I want to thank you for your time this evening. We hope it has helped give a picture of the SRBI process and its benefits to building our staff capacity and student learning.
So real quickly, as we transition to the middle school presentation, a couple of things I want to point out or reemphasize from the Osborne Hill presentation. One is the iterative cycle that goes into effect when we're doing our best work. The idea of looking at student work, responding to that student work, testing out something to see if that has a positive impact on the learning, and if it doesn't, going back and reexamining it. So that this is just a constant process. It's part of our work. The other thing I want to point out is the great value of teamwork. Osborne Hill has presented to you tonight, but this is, this type of teamwork, these results are being replicated across the other 10 elementary schools as well. It really does take a group of people to produce these types of changes. Now, fewer in number, but still strong in voice, I'm going to invite Karen Martell and Chris Kelso up from Fairfield Woods to talk about the work they did in Grade Seven World Languages.
I don't know about stronger in voice, but we'll try.
So a couple of months ago, Mike asked if we would come to speak with all of you about the World Language Program. Chris Kelso and I taught seventh grade for the past three years together, and this is a new curriculum, as you know. And I have to say, I've been teaching in Fairfield for 22 years, and this curriculum really lends itself to students and to really increasing student proficiency. Just yesterday, I was at a Connecticut Council of Language Teacher Conference, and the keynote speaker, Greg Duncan, he really was talking about what is the national issue of world language, and it's that students are trying to leave the language classroom as soon as they can. And as we know, years ago, when we taught from the traditional method with teaching about the language rather than teaching to speak the language, students really kind of petered out. And it was, it is unfortunate that even at this day and age, 75% of high school students are leaving the world language classroom. So in high school. And I think that that's something that we need to look at as a nation, and I'm really, really excited about the program in Fairfield because we are pioneering a new way of doing things for kids. And Chris and I had a lot of fun with our students, and what we found as we were creating this presentation is what was the underlying theme of everything, and that was getting students engaged, getting students optimistic about their learning, and really being a part of the learning process. So that's what we'd like to show you tonight. We're going to tell you a little bit about our philosophy, and I will stop talking because he says I talk too much, so go ahead.
So where do we start? Anything, you need to have positive culture and climate in the classroom. So Karen and I's philosophy to the kids, which was articulated to the kids at the beginning of the school year, was that we are only as good as our lowest-performing student. And so, and we told them that. So they knew that we were there as their coach and as their team member. By doing that, we fostered a positive culture and climate where students feel comfortable to take risks in our classroom because learning a foreign language is risky. Speaking a language that is not yours is difficult for students, but when you foster a positive culture and climate in the classroom and the students know that you are behind them every step of the way, they strive for excellence, they are engaged in what we're doing, motivated and passionate to learn more and more. We also developed a philosophy of competency-based learning in the sense that we were not happy if our kids didn't learn at least 80% of what was going on, and we were committed to make sure that when they left us in seventh, at the end of seventh grade, that they got at least 80%, if not more, of that curriculum. And one thing, we focused on what students can do, not what they can't do. And we showed our students this quote by Carol Ann Tomlinson, and in fact, our parents as well, because it was in our open house presentation. Excellence in education is when we do everything that we can to make sure that they become everything that they can. And when your culture and climate and those four walls of your classroom embody this philosophy, students rise above and beyond expectations. And that's what our kids did for years and years, several years.
So some of the recipe for success is that we really had the support of our administration and our department leader, Eileen Frankel, who has really been the pioneer in moving this curriculum forward. We've had time to collaborate together. We were able to horizontally align the curriculum. Every day, we were able to focus on working with the kids, and we had our students moving from classroom to classroom, interviewing each other in the target language, which aided their motivation, and they were having an excellent time. I mean, I cannot tell you how much fun it was to watch kids, even though we had to tell them stop running in the hallways, to come running to our class during the day because they knew that that was a time that they could interview other people in the target language, and it was really great.
So I think it's important to recognize that as a board of education, I know that many times, you're bombarded with the science and the data, the summative data, but teaching is also an art, and it is all about relationships. Relationships with your colleagues, relationships with all stakeholders, parents, board of education, but most importantly, relationships with the students because after all, our guiding principle is doing what is in the best interest of kids each and every day. So some of the formative data that we used every day in our classroom to drive our instruction is here. So most of the standardized data that you see comes at the end of the year, whether it be world language stamp testing, or the SBACK, or SAT, PSAT data. What we really want to show you is how you use formative data. Formative data every single day in order to drive your instruction, to drive the planning, the implementation, the reflection, and the revision of instruction so that students, all students, make performance gains in the classroom. Some formative assess- Some formative assessment, simple teacher observation. What are you observing the kids doing visually? What are you hearing them? They're speaking the language. Are they comprehensible? Do you understand what it is that they're, the message that they're trying to convey? Exit slips, self-reflection sheets, that in and of itself is huge, the self-reflection piece. When you tell students what it is that the learning goals are, what it is that they need to know and be able to do at the end of a unit or at the end of a year, and then you have students self-reflect and say, "Am I meeting these goals along the way?" It is that formative assessment that, in our opinion, drives purposeful instruction so that all students make performance gains in the classroom. Another piece is looking at student work, okay? With a focus, with the lens of what it is that we want our students to know and be able to do. And in world language, we have can-do statements, and each unit has a list of can-do statements. And those kids, those students were given the list of the can-do statements at the beginning of the unit, not at the end. "Can you guys do this now?" No, no, no. This is what you're supposed to know and be able to do at the end of this unit. And that truly drove the focus of our instruction daily in the classroom. Moreover, feedback, immediate feedback, continual feedback, and personal feedback to each student on what it is that they need to do to move themselves forward in the world language classroom. Students analyzing their own work, self-reflection and revision based on our can-do statements.
So now that we have all this data, what do we do with it in the classroom? And as Chris was saying, that we have the kids self-reflect, and our kids know that they are in a classroom where they are part of the process, that they are taking ownership of their learning, they're able to look at their can-do statements. We were able to differentiate for students who maybe rated themselves having a little struggling area, that we would flexibly group them, and I might meet with that group while Chris was meeting with another group. So we were offering the kids who were advanced, they were, we were offering them some extra activities to be able to cognitively challenge them as well. So we were collaborating constantly to ensure the success of all the students, the students who were meeting goal, the students who were more advanced, the students who were also struggling. And the connection with another adult in the building, this collaboration, now Chris is the dean of students, so he now already knew 200 students after working in the world language classroom collaboratively. So it has been a really great experience for the kids as they're moving forward, and they enjoy being a part of the process and reflecting on this. Education is really not about what you do to kids or for them, it's what you do with them.
So what we'd like to do is, we know that you guys all know the Fairfield Public Schools' Learning Principles, but we'd like to show you them in action from our classrooms. So hopefully, we're going to bring these alive for you tonight, right here.
So learning involves teachers and students who are passionate learners. Last April, I received an email from a former student who, in her junior year in private school, she had planned a trip with, she actually initiated it, to go to Guatemala and to bring a group of students to build a school. And she wrote to me, and she said, "You were one of the teachers who really influenced me to use my language in a positive way to change the world. Would you like me to come in and give a presentation?" And I said, "Absolutely." And there we are. She brought and did a whole PowerPoint, junior in high school, and really showed my students, my seventh grade, 11- and 12-year-olds, that you can use this language somewhere to change the world. And I think that was a really motivational event for all of them. On the right-hand side, you'll see one of our students. We had some service dogs coming into the building last year for our students to read to them. And research has shown that reading with dogs is really a way to lower the affective filter and to make kids more comfortable with what they're doing. And we'll share some quotes of how the kids felt about that and how it really increased student achievement, believe it or not.
So "Learning celebrates the belief that all learners are capable of success and growth." If you look here, the stamp standard on the top for intermediate-low, which is above where our seventh grade students need to be at the end of the year, says that students, "Variety of sentences that utilize different verbs to create independent thoughts, mostly composed of a recombination of learned, simple sentences and added detail in the form of prepositional phrases and verbal phrases." Moreover, if you look at the student work in the target language, she meets this expectation. As a matter of fact, I, you see that her name has been redacted, and there's no identification on here of students or district. I posted this on the Spanish teachers' Facebook page, and it's across the country, and I asked teachers to tell me what level of work they thought this was. And many teachers said that this came out of a Level Four, Level Forty, Level Forty-one would be in ours, but a Level Four in other districts, which is what work, what seniors are doing in high school. And this is a seventh grade student. I've gotten then several private messages saying, "How can, how can we bring this to our school? Because this is fantastic, and this is amazing." And this is all kids, and they're all capable of doing work like this.
So we have a few samples to share with you. And another learning principle, Fairfield Public School Learning Principle, explores the creation of meaning and the extension of knowledge through its application to relatable real-world conditions. We're going to play the video on the right for you first. This was a student at the end of last year. She, during April break, she had an opportunity to go with her family to the Dominican Republic, and she said, "Oh, I couldn't believe how much Spanish I was speaking, senor." I said, "Let me videotape you." So she's relating this information in English, and I just taped her and asked her if we could show this tonight, and this was her experience as, actually, she just turned 12.
On the left is an example, yeah, the left is an example of two students engaging an interpersonal discourse in the target language. As a Spanish teacher, it's extremely impressive that seventh graders can speak on a variety of subjects, and you'll hear this, so it's pretty good. Okay, we don't have to go through the whole thing, but you can see that the students speak with fluency, and they're speaking about their musical preferences, just as an FYI.
For those of you learning in the traditional grammatical way.
Okay, ready? All right, we need to advance this, and it's not advancing. Oh, I see where to do. Got it. Got it.
So "Learning encourages academic and social risk-taking and open communication in a safe community." So what is really exciting about this curriculum is that we all know, as world language teachers, that when you're learning another language, it is very scary to go somewhere where you might not understand about 80% of what you're hearing or seeing around you. So what are the strategies, the skills that you're going to need to be able to survive and to extrapolate meaning from native speakers? So we really tried to simulate that in our classrooms with the climate and culture of, you're going to be speaking with so many different people, and you're going to just keep practicing the learned expressions and then also creating new expressions and feeling more comfortable in the target language. So what we really are enjoying about this is that students are not reading from a script or writing a script. They are really able to converse in the language. And on the right-hand side, you'll notice, this was one of a formative assessments, and sometimes the students will say, "Well, how do you say this?" Or, "How do you say that?" Because they are, they're just learning meaningful expressions. And this was a Level 10B, which is Level One Spanish, and this student actually wrote in the subjunctive tense. I recommend that "My mom has salad on the trip that we're going on." So they are learning to use elaboration, it's actually cross-content, they're learning to use evidence from texts that they read as well, so it's just really amazing to see the work that they're coming up with.
So the last one. "Learning inspires self-assessment, reflection, and continuous adjustment and adaptation." The self-reflection piece is part of what Mr. Cummings said was part of the goal of this presentation, is formative assessment and student self-assessment to enhance instruction and learning. And on the left here, if you can see that that is a self-reflection sheet for what the students are supposed to produce at the end. So we gave them that, of course, in the target language, saying that that's, those are the targets you need to meet. That's an A+. That's the target. Moreover, it's the learning target. It isn't about the A+, but it is about the learning. And we want you to be sure, when you turn that in, that you have all of those checked because it is not about the grade, it is about the learning. And then if you look on the right, this is another graphic organizer for them to plug in all their information, and at the top in bold is an example, okay? Again, raise the bar for the students. This is what we expect you to know and be able to do, and we lay it out for them, and they go to work and they do it. And every time, every time, they turn something in, more amazed than the last time because we keep raising the bar higher and higher and higher, but with that underlying teacher support, positive culture and climate, the kids go, and they go, and they go, and they move forward and forward and forward. Finally, we're going to leave you with some stakeholder feedback from parents, students, and the community at large that we have received. I'll let Karen take over on this.
So this message was from the woman who was brought in the service dog, and she has been visiting schools around Connecticut, and she was just very impressed with our students. And she sent us this letter. I'm not going to read all the letters, but she said, "Of all the elementary, middle, and high school students I've met, in the past 20 years in Connecticut, I've yet to visit a school with such a polished group of teens. I was so impressed with their behavior, discipline, respect, intelligence, and grooming of the Fairfield Woods Middle School kids." So we were proud to have her there, and this letter was from our eighth-grade colleague who was showing us how our students are really acquiring the language and not just memorizing lists of vocabulary.
At the beginning, Karen mentioned teaching skills through content, and this is a direct reflection of that, teaching skills through content.
And so this is where we see the vertical alignment of the curriculum and how Grade Six builds, Grade Seven builds upon Grade Six and Grade Eight from then on in. And so this eighth-grade teacher said, she gave them an assignment, and then she was just amazed by what they wrote. They used a lot of transitional words, gave examples, and they also wrote entire paragraphs, and I had them add more information. And I think that this curriculum really lends itself to the students innovating and creating more than they would if it was just the traditional methods. So, the one before that.
Oops, sorry.
Going far. I like the third one. These are from some parents after the service dogs came in. The first one is about, "My child spent all week long trying to write more and more because she knew she could spend more time with the dog." So that was really motivating for kids, and that's what Chris and I really tried to do, was plan a lot of different events for them to help student engagement. We all know that if students are engaged and motivated learners, that they are going to achieve more.
The third one is the kicker, and I think we'll leave you with this one. "My son has been homesick this week, and he was feeling so bad that he missed your class. If that's not a testament to what was going on in those four walls, nothing is. Thanks for your time."
We have one more, and that's...
That's it, done.
Okay. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much. I'm actually, I'm in two very tough acts to follow tonight. It shows you what I really stressed over my professional practice is teams of teachers working, collaborating together, using information to drive instruction and instructional decision has really shown, has been a tremendous approach to improving student learning. So as I introduce myself, I am Dr. Paul Rassus, and I'm the Director of Secondary Math and Student Achievement. I'm here on this section to really get into a, what they call, growth data. For this section, there's really kind of three different kind of outcomes I'm looking to provide. One is understand what is student growth, and how does this relate to student achievement? And also, then, how does this impact, this student growth understanding impacts leadership and also teacher practice? And then in terms of how does this now, does growth really kind of affect our district and school accountability? As you'll see in this presentation, but I have part of this section, you will, there's all the information will be output and really kind of how it impacts our district overall. And ultimately, student growth is a newer metric that has really come out from the state of Connecticut, so gaining a good understanding of what this is, I think, is a very important aspect. So, what is student growth? So I pose a question to you. I give you a little situation here. I have athlete A on the left, just starting out, increased her jump four inches over four months. Athlete B on the right, an Olympian, improved his high jump one inch over four months. Who did better? Give yourself 10 seconds. Form an answer in your head. I won't call on anyone. Is there an answer to this? The answer is no. It's all relative because you have to kind of compare how students are changing or how things are changing relative to where they're at. So that's why growth is, you can't just say, "A high achiever versus a low achiever." Growth is actually exactly what I said, relative to how things are, where they're at. So here's a specific example in terms of smarter balance achievement. Student One on the left, student Two on the right, grade Three to grade Four. Again, just a hypothetical I put together for you. Student A, student One on the left, grew by 75. One on the right grew by 60. So again, may ask yourself the question, who did better? Don't have an answer in their head? So again, but what did we learn from my last slide? It's hard to compare in terms of we actually understanding what is expected. This is what the state actually has developed. They've actually developed specific growth targets for every single student, depending on where they're at. So for now, if I give you this information, can now, can you make a judgment? So if the target for student One on the left is 80, and they grew by 75, compared to the target on the right, which is 50, but the student grew by 60, now we can make an evaluation and judgment to where they're at. So understanding what this is and understanding what targets are and how this plays in terms of growth is an important understanding of understanding what, how to measure and how to compare student growth relative to where they're at. So, similar to a student story, ultimately, the state, like I said, gives a target for every single student at grades Four through Eight. Why not grade Three? Ultimately, you need two assessments to actually measure growth, okay? So here, this would be, say, an example, student A, the target that was given to them was 65. The growth that this student attained, you think about this, 60 divided by 65 gives you, they met 92.3% of their target. Similar to, if I have a student B who's target Similar to, if I have a student B, whose target has been assigned 56, grew only 20, ultimately, that student met 35.7% of their target. And likewise, going down for students C and D. So if you notice here, two students, again, this example, students did very well in terms of their targets, students in terms of maybe have other areas in terms of understanding their growth. So ultimately, this more like Mike Cummings asked, proposed, it really more starts asking questions. Why did these two students achieve their growth? Why compared to those others did not? So overall, we actually get an overall kind of number in terms of understanding growth. So here's another example. Now, this is what I call an achievement table. What do I mean by that? So this is the percent of students meeting or exceeding a benchmark. For example, a lot of times when we get their Smarter Balanced Results, or SAT, we actually measure what percentage of our students meet or exceed a certain benchmark. But only problem with this, this actually is a measurement of a single point in time. So if we're actually to kind of evaluate how teachers A, B, C, and D, somewhat I could say, "Well, teacher A, because they met 91% of their students met their benchmark, that maybe has the best instruction going on in their classroom, 56, 84, 85." But now I ask the question, what if I put up growth targets? Again, hypothetical in terms of understanding. Now, could we make a better judgment? Because maybe prior in teacher A, they were closer to 100%, so that we had a drop in terms of overall percentages. Maybe in teacher B, maybe 84, the average target achieved was 84%. Most likely, an example like that, they most likely were coming in at a lower percentage in terms of their achievement on that top row. So likewise, taking achievement and growth combined, what I'm asserting here is a better approach than just looking at overall achievement. Growth is what I consider a very important metric to understand, how are the students progressing and learning over time? Okay? Now, once we get into this, we can start asking, again, more questions. What are instructional practices that support students who are already meeting or exceeding benchmarks? Maybe that's the question. Maybe we can start asking questions with the teacher, okay? What about teacher B? Maybe what instructional practice have had a positive impact for those struggling learners in terms of helping them raise their achievement? Teacher C? What instructional practice can better support the students who are already meeting benchmarks? High achievement, high growth. And D? What instructional practice can better support students who are below benchmark? Low achieving, low growth. So again, answering the question, why is student growth important? For those of you who have ever seen this, this is actually the district accountability report that we get from the state every single year. This usually comes out in about February. If you actually look right here in the middle of the page, there are four different measures that we are measured on in terms of how students are growing. So we have ELA, all students, ELA, high needs. We have math, all students, math, high needs. And if you actually look at this and understand this report, this is actually the -- these four areas actually have the greatest weight on our overall accountability results as reported out by the state. Now, for those of you -- so this is one of my hidden objectives of what I have right here, in terms of this is what we call our EdSite. EdSite is our state of Connecticut public reporting portal. You can find out all this information that I've been providing to you in terms of not just overall achievement, but also performance. We can actually go right up to performance right at the top right. You can actually get into Smarter Balanced. You get into the Smarter Balanced page. We can actually go over and to look at how our overall growth model, we can actually find out. And actually, we can actually look, get that information specifically from the state of Connecticut. Now, one of the questions I asked myself when we got all this information back earlier in the air is, what's a good growth metric? So is 55? Is it 60? 65? 40? 80? So I went into kind of start delving into the, you know, me with data, I like to get into to make, help making meaning of data. I did an analysis of the state over two years, of every single grade, of every single district, in terms of how their overall growth rate, in terms of, that's the x-axis, to how that changed the percentage of students meeting and exceeding benchmark. Pretty much when I found, pretty much if you're, if overall growth rates are in the 60s, you're pretty much what I call staying the status quo. You're not really moving students overall to more students meeting and exceeding. This was ELA, similar, almost exactly the same for math. So if we're, again, if we see growth marks in the 50s and 60s, this actually, I mean 60s, I mean actually we're staying about the same, if we're seeing 70s, 80s, 90 growth rates, we're actually, we're moving a lot of students forward to be actually more and more students meeting or exceeding benchmark. But if we're now seeing growth marks in the 50s, 40s, 30s, this actually maybe raises a flag of concern. We actually can start discussing various aspects of instructional improvement. Now, this is straight off the EdSite website for all English, Language, Arts, and Terms, and also Mathematics, grades four through eight. Again, reminder, grade three is not here because we do not have a growth rate attained for grade three. So if you can see, we have varying rates of growth across the district. I could even say, so I mean, even pointing out, you look at grade seven across the district, we had very good growth, ELA, but also seventh grade math over, there's something that we probably start asking more questions about. Now, I want to mind you, this is not tell us about, say, I -- this would be one of the questions I would start asking you, what students are struggling in terms of their growth? Is it our low achievers, middle, high? And again, this allows us to start digging deeper, to start asking more questions, to understanding what, how are we meeting the needs of all students? We have, so, and we get tables of information from the state to better understand how these students are performing at the various spectrum in terms of their learning. So, so moving forward, this is what, in terms of my work really in the district last year, was to kind of really kind of start developing professional development to gain a better understanding of what is growth? And how, what is this, moving forward? I called this my traveling road show last spring into summer, working with a lot of different district, building leadership teams, to better understand what does this metric of growth mean? And how can we use this metric to help make informed instructional decisions? So again, and then allowed us to keep digging deeper in terms of how, in terms of overall analysis of not just looking at those students in terms of who are already meeting or exceeding goal, but also those students that are below or even below standard or approaching standard. How are those students, how are they achieving in terms of their growth between point A to point B? And also, this is a good metric we can actually judge, for those students of SRBI, does this work of our SRBI teams, as illustrated with here with Osborne Hill, in terms of, are those students that have been struggling in the past, has that work within those actions of our SRBI shown to have positive impacts? So, moving forward from here, we will be continuing to improve our, what I call assessment literacy with administrators and teachers with understanding this growth metric. And also, we continue to work with our building level teams, so around growth, to help guide our work to linking what are effective instructional practices. Continue to build our capacity of what I call professional learning communities, PLCs, the various names they have around the district, to focus on what are those highly effective instructional practices that really impact and have a positive impact on student learning? So, I turn it over to Mike. Thank you.
Before I go any further, and before I forget, I just want to thank again the presenters tonight for preparing in advance. They spent a lot of time on this. And then for the challenge of coming up here and speaking in front of you. That's the easy part, we all know, but they did a lot of work, and I just want to thank them for that. So just a couple of things to wrap up. So as we move forward, these are the challenges ahead. We have to continue to stay focused on the core elements of our improvement work, continuing to grow a culture of continuous improvement for all students, expanding our staff capacity to accurately identify and respond to student learning needs. And I want to emphasize, Dr. Rasmussen mentioned this in his report, but I want to emphasize, and we put a focus on SRBI tonight, but it's really important to remember that we are mean all students responding to needs of all students. So for that example that he provided, are we meeting the needs of our most highest achieving students? And how do we learn how to do that better as well? And remaining mindful of the time it takes to do this work well is always a challenge for us. And as always, increasing our consistency across the schools and the grade levels. Moving forward, these are things that we are specifically engaged in right now. I won't read them to you, but as you can see, this work continues. We're approaching it on several fronts, administrators, teachers, and through school professional learning, school and district-based professional learning. We also, the last bullet, or the fourth bullet, excuse me, I want to call attention to, a lot of our work this year at 612 is preparing for and building the SRBI program in grades six through 12, work that will continue next year. Just quick on the guiding principles, you've seen this before, but I always feel inclined to include them, because this really is about the work. And finally, just a couple of important reminders. We use data to identify instructional strengths and growth goals and to drive professional learning for school leaders, teachers, and support staff. That's why, that's how we use data. We prioritize our resources to maximize student learning under our SRBI framework. Again, it's important to remember, and SRBI framework is not just for the students who are struggling. Responsive instruction responds to the needs of all learners. And finally, the most important work we do is to engage students and teachers in joyful learning as we improve daily instruction. We'll have time for questions. I asked the presenters tonight not to leave when they were done, so they're available for your questions. And finally, there is a Red Sox game tonight. So any questions?
I am disappointed, Mr. Rasmussen, that you didn't put the score of the game up there. I want to thank Dr. Jones and the staff, those who are here, but also the staff in all of our schools who put so much attention into caring for the needs of individual students. You do a great job, and the whole board appreciates the work that you do. Questions or comments from board members, including at the very end, questions or comments from board members? Ms. Leeper.
Just a quick one about world languages. Also, I want to thank everybody for their time. I always enjoy hearing these types of things. You mentioned that 75% of students are leaving world languages, and I was wondering what time period that was, between middle school and high school, or along their high school journey?
Now, one of the disadvantages is that we are broadcasting this around the world. And so for teachers who want to respond, if you would come forward, that would be appreciated by our home audience.
So that figure of 75% was quoted by Greg Duncan, the keynote speaker at the COLT Conference, and that was a national rate of attrition for students leaving the world language program after high school.
Do you happen to know, and this is probably a really unfair question to ask you on the spot, what percentage of our high school students, and I know you're focused in middle school, are completing four years of world language?
Well, we do have Eileen Frankel here, and she's our world language coordinator, so perhaps she can answer that question.
If you can't, you can follow up with me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will get that for you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you, everybody, for your presentation. I appreciate it. The elementary presenters had given us some breakdown on the different tiered supports, but I was curious on the middle and high school level, if you're seeing any variation in the discrepancies going between the whole classroom to the tiered one, to the tiered two, either based on level more so, or no? That's staying consistent across the level, or?
I'm not quite sure of the question. That's why I'm --
Okay. So moving up the chain, do we see greater increase in those higher level of tiered supports at the middle and high school level than what we were hearing from elementary? Or are we seeing consistency across the levels?
I think you're seeing a consistency. I would say to you that the intervention system at the 612 is not yet where we want it to be. But I would say to you that the big change is the difference is, at the elementary, the primary issues, as you heard tonight, are around fundamental issues in reading and math. I broadly characterize those as fluency type-based issues, the kind of learning to read issues. In the upper elementary, middle, and high, the issue turns to more of conceptual understandings and content. And so the process of intervention, while there are always, there are unfortunately students who continue to struggle to read for different reasons, the primary focus of interventions at the secondary level learns to conceptual build and helping them understand those types of things.
If I can just add to that, too. I think when you get into secondary, your tier two and tier three, especially tier three are much more intensive, and you're looking at a lot of those programs we have, whether that's Walter Fitzgerald, or IMPACT program, small groups, and DBT. It goes so far beyond literacy and math, and a lot of our resources actually are in those other areas for tier three especially.
Okay, thanks. And what is STAMP?
STAMP is the assessment we give in world languages. It's a major proficiency.
It was?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. I'm wondering if some of our graduation requirement changes, when we allow eighth graders going forward to count these world language, will kind of assist with this dropout rate of high schoolers not maybe necessarily having those four years? And maybe that will help with that situation, maybe? Hopefully, right? We hope.
Full of hope. It's the World Series.
Huh?
I'm full of hope. It's the World Series.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's the goal, right? That's the goal. Okay. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Before I, anybody else? If not, Ms. Leeper?
I'll go after.
Ms. Leeper.
Just out of general curiosity, I feel like in education, often you hear a lot about growth mindset. But now that growth is being measured in this way, I'm wondering if staff are finding that any value in this way of measuring growth to their practice?
The growth data?
Yeah.
It's so relatively new to us that we even today just started to have this conversation with our elementary teachers on the early release. So it's, I'd say it's too early to call.
Dr. Rasmussen is nodding his head no. Okay.
Better be.
I have no agenda on that question. I'm just genuinely curious, because also you get saturated with data, right?
Just because you got to present doesn't mean anything yet.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, actually?
Please do.
We have had discussions about making sure how we use that data, that we are very, very thoughtful about it, because, you know, a teacher's class at the beginning of the year, they all look different. And we want to make sure that when we're talking about growth data, that it really is focused on, you know, helping all children be successful, but not where teachers feel like they're getting beat up over scores. And I think with a model like this, we have to be very, very careful about that.
That's right. Exactly. And because it is so new, we want to make sure that all the stakeholders are involved with this discovery process.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
Yep. And I'm sorry I can't ask these in an organized order because of where I took my notes. First of all, oftentimes, there's been talk about that the SRBI process is supposed to help reduce identification for sped interventions because of that work in the tier. Do we have any data, out of curiosity, to support numbers going down that would reflect the truth of that? Or is it?
We do not have that data yet. I think we're going to need a couple of years of this work to be able to produce that. But that is certainly the intention.
Right.
And I think you could, well, I was going to say, go ahead, Mr. Mancusi, but you could see it somewhat in that chart.
Yeah. Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Education. I don't have it on me for the first time in weeks, but there was something in the special education audit that did highlight the number of initial referrals that students qualified for last school year, which highlights the effectiveness of, you know, the SRBI process, particularly at the elementary level, because that's where most of our initial referrals and our eligibility determinations are made.
And if, just as a thought, and it might not be, if that could ever be framed as any kind of a budget number, that I think could be very compelling as steps that the district is taking and that there has been a tangible impact, just as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks.
A few more questions. I was wondering, to what degree, when we talk about the staff collaboration at the varying levels, to what degree is that happening within that organized time during the school day that I know we tried to make a focus of at the elementary school, switching to that six-day cycle? elementary school, switching to that six-day cycle? How much of that is happening during that common time versus regular Tuesday, faculty meeting, half-day PD, full-day PD? How is that generally done?
It happens in all those opportunities. This year, we've, we're undertaking an initiative to use the Looking at Student Work protocols in grade-level meetings, at the elementary, team meetings at the middle school, and in the PLC meetings at both of our high schools. It's something that we're actively training our staff and principals in. We have an underlying deep belief that teacher collaboration is the key to improving our student achievement.
That was actually my next comment, was I thought the degree of collaboration, I mean, obviously, you especially see it with more people up with the Osborne-Hill team. That was a very impressive degree of collaboration, but I was also like to see, mentioned from both groups of presenters, the reference to the teaching as art. I mean, in the, obviously, explicitly, it was part of the middle school presentation, but at the elementary school, that you heard that anecdotal component, that it wasn't just, you know, the assessment may have told me this, but I was seeing this in the classroom, and, you know, just such a value to the professionalism of our staff, kudos to them, and just so important to keep the staff that we invest in. So, I really appreciated hearing that. Couple of questions, and other questions. How much of this growth aspect is tied to staff goals?
We have not tied it to staff goals.
Okay. That was a quick one. And this is a question, I don't know if Dr. Rasmussen, how does the state determine the target? I'm not, even as an educator, I'm actually not familiar with that. How do they determine, on an individual basis, what that number should be?
The state ended up doing a large analysis of the first, how one student's moved from, say, one grade to the other, and ultimately, they determined the data value was where 40% of the students met that target. So, that was, so they decided that will be their target for any, because they, and they broke it up into eight specific levels, in terms of level eight, meaning our high performers, to level one being our, say, our bottom part of the not-meeting category of the smarter ballots. So, they did analysis to kind of, where 40%, where 40% would meet the target. That's how they determined that.
Because, of course, it's kind of fascinating that they're choosing this huge macro number all about the personalized goal-setting of individual students, but I guess they have to do that somewhere. And so, all right, so my question about the percentage picked, so to what degree are we devoting, I mean, how is the professional development being organized? Maybe you could give an example of some of the things for this coming year, the whole notion of targeting all students. So, can you give me any examples of certain professional development that you're targeting for, our higher-achieving students who aren't making that growth number, middle, I mean, I don't want to go through all eight tiers, but if you give some examples of some of the professional development or things being considered?
So, the strongest example of that is the Looking at Student Work protocol. If you've engaged in it, you know that what we look at in that is, the initial part of that is identifying essentially groups of students in student work samples, students who didn't, are not meeting at all the target of instruction, students who are somewhat meeting the target of instruction, and students who've exceeded the target of instruction. And in our, the protocols we're using around that student work, conversation focuses essentially on, what are the teaching points for each of those groups? So, for those kids who've already met the target of instruction, what is meaningful work that they engage in, what's the next level of learning for them, and how should those tasks be created to ensure that they get there? That, I would say, because of the breadth of that work across the district, and essentially because it involves every teacher and every administrator, that is going to be the bulwark of the work we do this year.
And that translates well to K through 12?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. And I know this was common sense, but I just wanted to confirm that that growth data is following cohorts. That's not by grade. Is that correct?
It is. It's actually a true matched cohort.
Okay.
It is. And actually, the students actually have to have both scores, or if they don't have both scores, they are omitted from the data set.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. And then, just one final point regarding the world language sort of follow-up, is that I did think our alumni survey provided some interesting, I know that world language, there was, and I haven't seen this year's alumni survey, but I do recall that from last year, that the alumni survey, world language in particular stood out as having comments of where it was a struggle for students, and I'm sure corresponded to those numbers who then left and didn't continue study of it. And just of my hope that that is something that our staff looked at. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Ms. Vitale, did I see your hand before?
You did, but Ms. Max Cannelly covered my questions. I had the similar ones to PD and collaboration, and thank you for all your work. It was very interesting. And I was wondering if any of those presentations would be available on the website?
They're available for sale.
Perfect.
No, we will, we will...
I'll pay them. How much?
We will definitely put it on the website, and as soon as possible.
Thank you.
So, every time the Red Sox are playing, you'll be in a humorous mood? Is this what?
All depends on the outcome.
Any other final comments? Ms. Jacobson?
I just have one quickly question on the data report that we got with the actual achievement data prior to the meeting. So, in looking at some of the APs, great that we're opening the gate and more students are feeling inspired to take AP courses, but I'm just curious what the process is when, you know, we're expected to get at least 75% with a three or higher who enroll in those courses. So, what is the process when the percentage meeting that benchmark is far below that number? And we're looking in terms of instruction, or in terms of what? Just how do we address that issue?
I might take that, just simply because I used to be an AP coordinator. First of all, from my perspective, I think that when we have open enrollment, we are trying to encourage all of our students to challenge themselves. So, I would never say 75% of a class must hit a three, four, or five, because we have students who may be taking multiple exams, they're studying more for the exams that they think are going to count for them in college. We have students who have really stretched themselves because counselors and teachers have encouraged them to take those courses. They also, when you look at the pass rate of three, four, and five, you have to look at the national data. It's much easier on some of the exams to get a three, four, or five than it is on some of the others. And literally, where there are exams that you only have, 40% of the students across the country that are able to obtain a three, four, or five. So, there's lots of different factors that go into that. It's just much more complex of an answer.
Okay. But that's just what the state expectation is? So, would you say that's a flaw in the model, then?
I would say it's a flaw in the model unless you want teachers to discourage students from taking the exam. And that's what you see in districts where, well, I'll give you an example. I was in a state where, very short-lived with AP, but if you got a four or a five, the teacher got $100 for every student who made a four or a five. So, what happened, because there was so much pressure for students to make fours and fives, well, you just, you didn't want to put your time and effort in, not that teachers really thought that way, but they would discourage the students from really challenging themselves because they felt like the pressure from the state was, you need a four or a five. And I don't think we ever want to go in that direction, but if you put too much pressure on that, and if that's what the state actually came out and said, I think you would just be discouraging students from taking the test, and especially in a district where they have to pay for them. You know, a lot of districts pay for these exams for their students. We don't. So, if I'm a student, and I don't think it's going to count for college, you know, I'm not going to get credit for it. I'm going to have to go and repeat it. I may not take it. And that can be some of your top students, especially in a class like calculus. You'll get students who choose just not to take a BC test because they're going to have to repeat the class anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shall we move on? I see no other hands up, so thank you again for your presentation and for the work the teachers are doing. Before I introduce the motion that's on the table, I remind the board that we had a spirited discussion on community service at our last meeting, and we actually had two motions that were postponed to a date certain today. And so, we do have to deal with what to do with those two motions. I had asked Mr. Acer and Ms. Jacobson to get together and see if, how they wanted to proceed on the mandatory versus voluntary approach. The two of them have and have come up with a thought which will allow us to, by unanimous consent, take both motions off the table, and I'll ask Mrs. Jacobson to talk about the discussion that Mr. Acer and she had.
Sure. Yes. After our last meeting, Mr. Acer and I did talk about the mandatory versus the voluntary, and we feel strongly that the board has strong support for community service as a value of Fairfield Public Schools. That being said, that, as Phil had said, we are going to, you know, we decided that at this time, that it deserves a little bit more thought on the implementation piece of it, and just collaborating a little bit more with staff and administration on how that might best work for Fairfield Public Schools. So, at this time, and based on our conversation with Tony and with staff, and between Nick and myself, that yes, I am going to request unanimous consent by the board to withdraw the motion that was left on the table for tonight, so that we can just have further deliberation on it, and just how that might work best for this district going forward at this time. Thanks.
And as a reminder to the board, once a motion is on the table, the motion belongs to the board, not to the maker, and that's why we need unanimous consent to go forward. And I remind the board that Dr. Jones had commented about whether they could find a way, staff, to embed community service in the academic experience. I should have had my head in gear when we were debating it, because attaching an amendment about voluntary community service to a high school graduation requirements policy would not have been correct. And the recognition effort of cords around the neck and, you know, other things are really done at the local school level by staff, and they determine what levels of achievement in the various academic areas deserve recognition. And so, I think as a total board, we are encouraging Dr. Jones to explore with her staff how to embed it into the curriculum. And then, perhaps as a board, we may or may not want to find sometime in the future to talk about mandatory community service. So, unanimous consent to withdraw the motion that was offered as an amendment. Seeing no objection, so ordered. And then, I also need unanimous consent to remove the main motion, because the main motion was talking about the old policy of the old date as amended, and the policy in front of you has been corrected, and so, we ought to have a motion on the table that says conforms to it. So, by unanimous consent, we remove the main motion as well. I see no disagreement. So, that clears the table for the recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt Policy 6146, requirements for graduation. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly and Mrs. Jacobson? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do you have any comments you wish to make?
Most importantly, I have no corrections. So, that the policy did take this up again last week, just to make the, you know, make clear the final changes that needed to be made, which involved the numbers on the first page, and involved, that referenced on the, on Page D regarding notifications. And other than that, Mr. Peterson and I had a little fun time with some commas and some dashes and fierce arguing over those things, but other than that, we present the policy before you, representing six months' worth of work with staff and devoted policy committee of three for your consideration. I have not received any questions. A few comments from Mrs. Leeper, but I'll let her raise those. But Mr. Dwyer, you'd like to defer at the moment?
No, have you finished making your comments?
Yes. So, now, at this point, I open it up for any additional board discussion or questions.
So, I will ask the student representative if she would like to make some comments.
Yes, I would. Thank you. So, I would like to discuss the civics requirement high schoolers are required to fulfill. It is, well, upon meeting with several teachers and students in and out of classes that fill this requirement, the lot of us agreed that the Advanced Placement United States History course covers all, you know, if not the vast majority of the civics topics. The APUSH course includes important social, political, economic, and environmental issues that are not only in our era, as we cover more modern topics towards the end of the year, but throughout, you know, all of American history. Although there is less of a global perspective, we argue that the sophomores' required Global Studies course fulfills such criteria. In fact, both Global and APUSH classes engage in activities promoting, you know, leadership, collaboration, research, and communication, all of which students use in and out of the classroom. So, taking a civics course that occupies time students might need to study for these classes, it's kind of redundant, to be quite honest, but it's still a great resource. And I feel that if, you know, civics is covered by the APUSH course, it would encourage enrollment in this course, as it, you know, it's a great class. So, yeah.
Regarding civics, I know that some of the, you know, APUS.gov, APComp.gov, both fulfill it. I don't believe APUSH does not, but that's also, there's a, obviously, the historical nature of it as opposed to the social science nature of it. So, I don't know how that course would be changed, because obviously, that's a curriculum that has to get approved by the College Board in order for us to even offer APUSH, the APUS History, but the civics requirement is fulfilled by a few other courses in addition to civics.
I know this, but I'm just saying, I am familiar with a few students who are taking AP Government and Comparative Government, and they've noticed that the curriculum between the two classes, it's incredibly similar. In fact, it's almost as if they're doing the exact same activities in each class. And I would argue that with the, you know, AP United States History course, we have a better understanding of the Constitution and, you know, how it's impacted our society, like, going forward, and how we can gain a kind of, a bigger perspective on what it means to be American than we would in sort of like a half-year course. So, I think students might be, you know, leaning more towards taking like a small civics course instead of like gaining this perspective in, you know, an AP United States History course.
I'll ask Dr. Jones and perhaps Mr. Cummings. Once we pass this policy, the staff have work to do to determine what classes will count toward what credits. And what is the process that happens? Because I don't know that all of those decisions have been made. So, what's the process that Ms. Phillips could sit in on and make her case?
That's a conversation that we are, as you mentioned, Mr. Dwyer, in the process of having the headmasters, myself, and the curriculum leaders, the high school leadership. It's something that we have to, we should be looking at. I'm sorry Dr. Baglu's had to leave, but it's something I can bring up with him. Oh, he's...
Yeah, Dr. Baglu's, okay.
We can get his input. But we are still in the process of that with all of our courses.
To the question of where is that decision made, and can Ms. Phillips, as a representative of this board, be engaged in that in some fashion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, this is the man to keep track of, or hassle, or nag, or whatever adjective you want to use, okay?
Yes.
Let's see. Ms. Leeper, you had a question?
I think maybe more just a series of comments. I'm surprised we haven't gotten more public input on graduation requirements. I think this is huge, and it's going to impact students for a long time. And maybe I'm an outlier in being as passionate about this as I am. So, just for the point of kind of closing the loop on a number of different things that I had brought up along the past six months, I see like no progress was made on the flexibility around PE requirements, but I do see that it says, half a credit must be in PE. What is wellness beyond PE for the other half? And you might not be the right person to answer that, but maybe...
We've talked about that, but I'm, not one, I'm going to need for Dr. Jones to describe what the staff is doing, again, to Mr. Cummings' point about identifying courses and courses that don't exist yet. But, Dr. Jones?
And if I, if you don't mind, Ms. Phillips, you had a comment you wanted to make on that comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that I feel social health is important, especially when you're going throughout high school, and it's arguably just important as the physical health. And I feel like PE is the antithesis of, you know, social health, but it is, it's something that I think students would really benefit from seeing, and it's something that's not really covered in, you know, health classes.
Dr. Jones?
Well, I mean, I think you said it. It's really, right now, we're looking at what courses don't even exist that we're going to be having for graduation. We still have quite a bit of work to do, and I don't know, Mr. Cummings, if you have anything to add to that specifically, but...
No, we, only to say that even yesterday, I had a conversation with one of our curriculum designers who are exploring options in courses. Those courses may exist in different curricular areas. I will tell you that you're going to hear a budget type about a potential health course that could address the wellness issue.
I'll only say that I have always advocated that life experience is as valuable as classroom experience in the education process, and being able... And being able to get credit for experience with sports or experience with volunteer community service outside of a classroom experience should get counted, period. But there's different viewpoints on that. Ms. Leeper?
I share that feeling, and there's a lot of opportunities for kids to earn credits. And I guess I don't know whether or not those credits are able to apply to graduation standards, but for internships and other, outside of the classroom learning opportunities. So I was hoping we could find a way to make PE a line in that way, but that's okay. And I thank Mr. Cummings for making time to talk with me about financial literacy. And I actually think it ties in really nicely with the discussion we're having around wellness, and also since the health and safety requirement has increased from the old requirement, because I think financial literacy is one of the biggest components of having a successful adult life. And I don't feel like we were able to find a way to make it naturally fit to be a requirement at this time, because we couldn't find some relaxation in other places. And the whole spirit of this new legislation was to give students more flexibility, and I want to honor that. But I did also want to say, I still do think this is important, and I do look forward to finding ways to maybe create a class that doesn't exist yet that could fit within this greater social wellness or health, because I actually think financial health is, you know, it's the greatest stress most of us live with in our lives. And then lastly, we also talked about ways to market it to students, because the course does exist, one specifically on financial literacy does exist in the high schools. The enrollment's quite low. I thank Mr. Cummings for getting those enrollment numbers to me. And I think that maybe we could jazz it up a little to entice students to want to enroll in that type of course, and that doesn't need to make it mandatory, it just needs to highlight its existence to students and maybe why it would be relevant to their life. And that's more of a marketing thing. But I want to thank Policy for tolerating my bowjering and Mr. Cummings for his time and kind of working through the kinks of some of these ideas. And that's really it.
Other comments that board members wish to make? Any comments from the other policy committee members that you would like to make at this time? You don't need to, I just...
I would very much like to thank Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli for her leadership in this process, which has been long and had a lot of twists and turns. I will say just clearly to Ms. Leeper's point, that there was some public participation in some of the policy committee meetings, which was, I thought, unexpected but nice. So there have been stakeholders who have been making their opinions known through the process, and we've tried to listen where it's been appropriate.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Yes, thank you to Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli on her leadership on this policy, but also to the staff who worked with us on this policy, because I will say that we asked for a great deal of information and work ahead of time that will be ongoing, of course, but of course the three of us have a pretty good understanding of what that's going to entail and look like going forward. But we really did ask for a lot of information and had a lot of thought process in them with them. So just thanks to them as well for tolerating all of our requests and providing what we asked for, so much appreciated.
With no further comment, this is a voting item, so let me go to the public to see if any member of the public wishes to come forward and present to the board, state your name and address.
Yes, thank you, Bob Smoller. I'm president of the Fairfield Education Association. I did want to just share my comments with the overall board. I did attend the policy committee meeting and shared the thoughts with them as well, but I did want to get them on the record. So we've had a lot of discussion among the faculty about the option of including the SAT as a requirement to meeting the content section of the mastery requirement. And overwhelmingly, the staff is against it. They believe strongly that that option will become the de facto method for meeting the content standard, mainly because we give it to all students in the school district. And because it'll add an element of higher stakes to taking that test right now, because right now, if you do well on it, you don't do well on it, it really doesn't matter unless you're college-bound, in which case it has significance. But now, it's going to have a much more added degree of significance because your graduation is at stake. And so we believe it will lead to, although some have disagreed, to more teaching to the test, a greater emphasis on families, to signing up for test prep courses. We think that it will isolate the free and reduced lunch students, who are less likely to meet the proficiency standards, as well as the ELL students, the SPED students, non-college-bound students. I have had a lot of discussion with our counseling staff, who already report a high degree of stress among those students about taking the test. In fact, when we had the PSAT test just given the other day, I watched our ELL teacher walk one of their students into the test and basically said to them, "Don't worry about it, you probably won't be able to answer a single question on the test, but you've got to sit through it, so, you know, just do the best you can, and, you know, we won't worry about it, it doesn't really affect you at all." Well, now it will affect that student, because they can't graduate without meeting this requirement or doing something other than what every other kid has to do in the school. So a much higher degree of stress is anticipated with this requirement. We also think it runs counter to the direction we're moving in as a district. Obviously, we had a presentation about growth today. This is not about growth, meeting a standardized test proficiency score. We think we'd much better focused on growth items or real-life activities. And the suggestion we had, just to wrap up, is we're already creating performance-based assessments in all of our courses to meet the academic expectations. It would be nothing to put a content score on those assessments as they are given and use those content scores to meet the mastery requirement. We're well on the way to creating these things, and I would hope that you might consider that as opposed to putting the SAT and the ACT in as a graduation standard.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? When we come back to the board, you can talk again, right now we're at the public session. Anybody else from the public wish to come forward and talk on the motion in front of us at the moment? Seeing none, back to the board, Ms. Phillips?
To say the least, and with other students I've spoken with, the requirement of taking the SAT is, you know, inconvenient. We miss a day of school, and already, in 2016, across America, about 64% of students sat for the ACT. So to miss a day of school while you're taking a test that's becoming like, sort of irrelevant as time goes on, and the tests are sort of structured differently. For one student, the SAT is a major struggle, but for the other, the ACT is a breeze. So it sort of unfairly gauges students' performance. And it's not worth having students be required to sit for a test for scores they might not use and not even do well on either. So I don't think it's, you know, a very appropriate way to gauge performance or useful for 64% of students.
Thank you very much. Back to the board for action. Ms. Cannelli, do you have any final comments you wish to make?
No, just thank you again to all for your work, for your diligence, for your questions, and I look forward to seeing the staff get to work on preparing to implement these with our eighth graders.
Okay. With nothing further, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6146, requirements for graduation. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Asa? It is unanimous, thank you very much. New business, first reading of policies. Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, you have a couple of policies?
So the first policy, use of physical force, was a direct reaction in terms of statute language changes. And so you'll see that enclosed, you have the red language to let you know what has been added, and then just a clean copy without the red, which is attached to it. So that's the use of physical force. And then the student education records and confidentiality. That change was generated from staff, that they came to us with a request that we make some changes to this. Initially, we'd been actually looking at a far more comprehensive change, and then ended up just with this, but again, the student policy 5125 was generated from Fairfield staff.
This is a first read. It'll be on the agenda in November for action. If you have any questions or comments on the policy, please address them to Ms. Maxson-Cannelli in advance of the meeting, so she can be ready to respond to them. Is there any comment immediately that somebody wishes to make now? Seeing none?
And if I may add one additional comment, if you do have questions on either of these two policies in particular, if I could please have them very, very soon, because the person to whom I need to refer your questions is on a day-to-day basis here, and so I would rather not ask her these questions when she is otherwise occupied. So again, a little bit of urgency to questions on these two policies in particular.
The public might wonder, what, somebody's on a day-to-day employment basis? And the answer is no. All of us in this room know that she is expecting a child, and that's what you mean by day-to-day basis.
Yes.
So on to item B, first reading of the 2019-2020 student calendar. Dr. Jones?
First of all, this calendar mirrors very closely the calendar that we have this school year. There are some things about the calendar, and sorry, I'm trying to find my, oh, here it is. There are some things about the calendar, yeah, thank you, that we have built in over the last couple of years that we think are really important, and this is from work and listening to our staff. We have some, we have about, there are three, I believe maybe four, additional early releases that we, this would be the third year that we have had those. And I think all three of the different groups that you heard talk tonight in the data presentation referenced the collaboration, the professional development time. That was something that was very much missing from our calendar, and I will say the staff have utilized those early releases exceptionally, and so we're happy that those are still in here. This calendar was reviewed by our district leadership team, so they've all weighed in on it, as well as Mr. Smoller, to make sure that we have, you know, capitalized on what our teachers felt was important in their instructional calendar. Some of the changes from the first draft, just from the staff version, was as we were preparing to go forward with the calendar, Westport was one of the first calendars that really was out there, and they are choosing to go with April 6th through the 10th for their spring break. However, the CES calendar came out, and they were staying with the 13th through the 17th, which is what we've gone with. And we also have several other districts around us that are staying with that CES calendar. So when we discussed it, we really felt like for staff, the bulk of our staff, to be off with their children who are in other districts, that we needed to stay consistent with that. The other break that is different, a little bit on each calendar, is the winter break, depending on, do you want to add those two days in? For instance, the 23rd, we could be in school on that day, we didn't feel like that would be productive. Number one, we felt like we would probably be missing an awful lot of staff if we even tried to do that. So anyway, this calendar does capitalize on the things that we think are really important, especially the professional development, and where those professional developments are placed. We must have five full days, and that's required by contract. Three of those are before school starts, and I'm not even really going to consider those professional days. We do our very best to have teachers jump through all kinds of hoops, and quite frankly, just getting your classroom ready, you could use all three days just for that. So we really only have two days during the school year. One is on Election Day, so we don't get any choice really about when that one falls in Fairfield, because our police department does not want us in school on that day. So that gives us one other day. And the other day is placed after Memorial Day for the first time this year. And one aspect of that is, you know, April and May are incredibly stressful for all teachers that are in testing grades, so that's really third grade all the way through high school. When AP exams are over, when our students have taken their S-Back exams, teachers are a little bit more able to actually think and be able to process on some of the new learning and innovation that we would like for them to be thinking about. And having that day in May, we feel like it's going to be very beneficial this year and that it will be again next year. It's an unusual placement, but again, teachers are through the testing crazy. And so those last few weeks of school, even to try something new that you've learned in professional development, you're more likely to take those risks as a teacher, because there aren't heavy stakes that time of the year. So we feel really good about that. I just want to mention, I did go out and also look, just because this is, we have several members of the board that this is a newer process for. In Fairfield, we have 182 instructional days. That does make our calendar a little bit different than some districts, and 187 for staff, which means we have to have those five professional. If you look at Greenwich, they have 180 instructional, 187, same amount of staff days. So they've made a commitment to build more professional learning in for their teachers and have fewer instructional days, which is an option, but that's not how we are set up. In Trumbull, they have 181 and 186. In Westport, they have 182 instructional, but they have 188. So they actually pay their teachers for an additional day to have that additional day of learning. The other two pieces that impact our calendar is we have, we are not, in Fairfield, I'm going to say we're not allowed, we do not have school on Veterans Day. Out of Greenwich, CES, Trumbull, Westport, we're the only district, and our community has been very committed to that. We had the discussion, I don't think it was with this board, it might have been the prior board, and, you know, the decision was made again to stay with that, to not be in school on that day, as well as having that extra instructional day. So both of those do impact our calendar. This calendar actually gets us out of school pretty much with our colleagues. In Greenwich, they're actually going later, their calendar shows them out on Friday the 20th. CES does not have their ending date posted that we could find. In Trumbull, they're out on Friday the 12th. Westport is out on Friday the 12th. We're just the weekend and out on the Monday. And again, part of that has to do with Veterans Day, because we lose that day during the year. So that's just a little bit about how the calendar is put together and why things are where they are.
This will be on the first meeting in November for a action. Any questions at the moment from board members on the calendar in front of you? Ms. Pitko?
I have a question so much as that, I know that a number of parents find in October and March, four half-days to be a huge inconvenience to finding childcare. I understand the need for it as an educator. I don't know if we can look at our conferences, how they're done over the three days, if we can remove one of those half-days. I would like that to be looked at before we actually vote on it. I would prefer to take the October 22nd half-day and the March 26th half-day out of the calendar. And I understand your rationale for the full PD day on May. I just feel as an educator, it would be better served earlier in the year than at the end of the year, especially when you're trying to put forth so many initiatives that truly come May, you're wrapping up for June. I just felt like it should be earlier, and that weekend gets a little confusing with having a half-day and then staying a whole extra day out. It's like another...
And you're talking about which day? I'm sorry.
May 26th?
Oh, May 26th. Yeah, I actually think, you know, we had a good trial run with this, was it last year or the year before, when we had the voting, where we had to do the extra election? So it was a good trial run of having a day like later in the year, and it was fantastic, because, and again, I, you know, having experienced it in May and June, I think you get a lot of tremendous work done, because teachers aren't sitting there thinking, "I really need to be planning my AP test this next week," or "three weeks from now," and they're stressed out about it, or they're worried about kids that, you know, aren't performing where they need to be for their fourth graders. When all that's over, you know, one of the biggest challenges we have is to keep students engaged those last few weeks and keep it exciting, and it's a great time for teachers to try something that during the year, maybe they weren't as willing to try, because the instruction can be a little bit more creative this last few weeks of school. So I think there's a lot of value in that day, and I think it's going to be fantastic.
But you wanted at least rethinking of that, and Dr. Jones can comment further at the next meeting. Mrs. Maxson-Cannelli, followed by Mr. Asa.
One quick question. I don't know, Dr. Jones, if you know this, or if we need our headmasters, but do we know yet the 2020 SAT day?
It was not posted as of this calendar. It was not out there yet.
Because as I recall, one thing we were told that that May 26th date, or the day after Memorial Day was being used for, was at least at the high school level... after Memorial Day was being used for, was at least at the high school level, looking at the data that had come in and how that could impact whatever it is that it was going to impact. But it's my understanding that they were getting test results of the current school year and doing work with it.
Now, that could very well be true. I don't, I don't know though if that's, does that seem early?
It seems early.
Yeah.
But that can be looked into.
ESAT, probably.
That can be looked into.
Okay. I know the students have their scores at that point, so I guess it's just the district that does not?
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Cummings, I'm not sure if you can answer that. When do we get our SAT data from the high school?
We've got that.
Again, sorry, but...
You might as well stay there.
We should have our SAT data. I'm looking back to the headmasters. Is it in June?
Yeah.
Depends on the test day.
It's, the turnaround is much better than it used to be, but around that time.
Okay. So that was my understanding. That was, that was one of the, you know, very, actually, I think I remember Dr. Boyce maybe even speaking about it. I'm not sure. I will say that I'm not in favor of the May 22nd early release. There is no academic connection to it. I understand families expressed an interest in it, but I think they have, if we stay with the May 26th, which I do understand the purpose of it, I'd love to hear more at the next meeting about how that was used across the district so that when we are asked, we can explain that May 26th and how it impacted, you know, student achievement and engagement. But in terms of trying to improve time on task and instructional hours, I just, I just don't agree with the May 22nd. And I certainly hope that we as a board and staff as a district, I completely agree with your phrasing, Dr. Jones, that this is a time where faculty can be more creative, but I do not like hearing the phrase used again and again, and I have heard it used by some staff, that that's when staff is shutting down. Staff might be more challenged at that point, might need to be more creative at that point, but I don't like to, I mean, our students are in their hands for another three to four weeks. That's not a time for shutting down. That's, again, certainly a time for creativity. So that was one comment I had. So we don't know the SAT yet, and I just wanted to say thank you for that December 23rd. I completely agree with that decision, that I appreciate that they'll just have that full day on Friday the 20th, and then they have a break after that. So definitely appreciated that decision.
Mr. Asa.
Okay. So some may remember last year that I had a, took issue with the number of half-days, and I think I had mentioned childcare at that time, too. But what, my biggest crutch here is that, I'm looking at this calendar, and I see 11 weeks that are affected because of professional development, most of which are half-days. And to me, it screams an interruption in instructional time. And I know, maybe for the elementary schools, it's less, but high school kids are getting out. I just, I have a, I have a fundamental issue with that interruption. I don't have any issue with professional development at all, and I don't want it to sound like that. But when we have out of the year only 18 weeks that are full weeks of school, I have a problem with it, and I think we need to look at it deeper. 23 weeks are affected by a combination of vacation and professional development, but again, 11 shortened weeks in some format from this calendar. And looking back, it seems that in years past, the district was able to manage without all of these extra half-days. And again, I understand the need for collaboration and professional development, but I think there needs to be a slightly different approach here because at the end of the day, all these early dismissals are an interruption in instructional time, and I have a fundamental problem with that. And I would like this board to consider and think about that. Maybe no one agrees with me, maybe they do, but I think it's a problem, and I think it needs to be addressed. And I understand the 182 instructional days, but maybe we need to look at taking away some of these half-days and putting in a full day somewhere to make up for it. I'm not saying I have the answer, but I would like to turn to the administration and staff and just say that at least one board member has a serious concern here and would like some alternatives looked at.
Thank you. Other comments that people have? Mr. Peterson, followed by Ms. Leeper.
I just want to echo some of the comments that have been made already, most recently by Mr. Asa, about the smattering of half-days throughout the year. I think it is an inconvenience to parents. I do think that flow is important in education and interruption of that. Again, while I, like everyone else here, support the notion of professional development, I think that it may be time to have a conversation about kind of a cost benefit from both ends of the spectrum. I know Dr. Jones was speaking, you know, about teacher growth, which is vitally important, but if there is some kind of detriment to the students, I want to make sure that that's balanced. I know that may be a kind of Manichean phrasing, but just to have that conversation. I do have kind of a specific question about January in terms of the high school finals, or high school midterm schedule. If, my memory serves, there'll be four days and then a makeup day. In this case, are there going to be?
No more midterms.
Of course you are correct. I'll withdraw that question then.
Anything further?
Just a random kind of notion. I wonder, and I've wondered actually for some time, why we refer to President's Day on this calendar, when that is not the federal or state-recognized name of that holiday, which should be Washington's birthday. So I don't know whether there is consensus on this board to change that in defiance of all the car commercials, but that is what the day is actually called.
Thank you. Ms. Leeper, followed by Ms. Jacobson.
So I want to be sensitive to the idea that it's really hard to change things the way they've always been done, and that perhaps this is a new philosophy on how to better get our teachers opportunities to collaborate. And when you talk about raising the floor, that seemed like solid evidence that maybe this additional teacher collaboration was instructionally beneficial to our students. On the flip side, I also do think that so many interrupted weeks is hard unless you really are going to go full-tilt and embrace this as a new strategy. So I came from a district where every single Wednesday all year long was a half-day. Our students were also in school 7:30 to 4:30 on the other days. So they more than made up for the lost instructional time, and I know that's not somewhere we're going to go here, but I do think that it is disruptive to parents also to have all these half-days. But is there not a way that we can partner with other programs in town that offer after-school programs on all these days? I know I've heard great things about the after-school programs that students attend just, you know, from the hour or two after school for parents, but maybe there could be an expansion of those programs for these days. Just throwing it out there as something to explore because it is disruptive. I mean, this is like 22 weeks, I mean, that includes vacation weeks where it's not a full week of school. So I do think there's an opportunity here, but also to be cognizant of the burden on families that this presents. And then I also was wondering, and maybe I'm going to really regret saying this, but is there a reason that the first day of school is on the 29th and not on the 26th, and pushing those three PD days earlier? Is that contractually required?
I am actually not sure on that one. I would have to double-check. That's just the way, it's been that way for years, and so I don't know if it's actually in, Mr. Schmoller may know better than I if it's in the contract, but I don't think so. I don't remember seeing...
It's one of those things where, do we want our students and teachers coming in earlier in the summer and sacrificing time on that end, or into June because of snow days and whatnot? And I feel like often we're hearing that those last days are not as instructionally rich as the earlier days. So just throwing it out there, please don't crucify me.
The one thing I would say is given this year, if it's any indication what next year it's going to be like, is it's too hot without our buildings that are air-conditioned. That's a, that's a huge piece for us.
Thank you. And one last, just also was going to agree about the 22nd of May being an early dismissal. Because we are giving up a lot of instructional time with this half-day model, I think maybe we need to be cognizant to not give it up where we don't have to.
So a question was asked that Mr. Smaller may or may not be able to respond to. Do you have a comment that you want to make, and then you want to follow up on that same conversation?
Well, can, we as a board, and three of the sitting board members had this conversation. I don't remember at what point after I was elected where it was discussed moving that date of the 29th to the 27th. And I know I was one of the people who was adamantly against it because it does force teachers to then give up that last weekend when they have their own plans and they are away. And so ultimately, after some board discussion, after there had been talk about moving it to the Tuesday, we returned it to the Thursday, and it hasn't been a topic since.
Mr. Smaller?
So contractually, the district has complete control over the school calendar, okay? But to the point of heat, on both ends, it's unbearable, and no instruction or a little instruction is constructive during the beginning end and the tail end. It's just too hot for anybody to concentrate in many of the buildings that are not air-conditioned.
And thank you for coming forth as a resource to us as opposed to a member of the public. Ms. Jacobson, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah. Just a quick question. I was curious about elementary school schedules, more so than the high school per se, because they have a condensed schedule where they still get to the, each of their classes on an early dismissal day. But what happens in elementary school for all of these half-days in terms of courses, special ed services, and the specials? Are they just missing repeatedly on each of those early dismissal days, or is something accommodated to make up for what they're missing in those afternoons?
Sure. Frank Arnone, Executive Director of Innovations. They work, the buildings work very hard to make sure that on the special ed aspect of it, that they truncate, truncate their schedules to make sure that they're giving all the services that they possibly can for those students, and they plan ahead to be able to put on that. There are times that, there are times when we have multiple weeks where you're having, because it's a rotational schedule now, A through, A through E, when you get, get the same day hit each time, it gets difficult because you're missing art or you're missing something else. So what the principals have been doing has been reshuffling, reshuffling their school schedule to make sure that teachers are able to get their planning time, students are able to get their art, art periods and such. It's a work, it's a bit of work, but it is worth doing.
Just a quick follow-up if I can. So in terms of the services and special ed, so are you saying that they're not, those are being made up?
They're working, they're working to either double up a schedule on that one or to redo their schedule for the day as on that one. Because as course with an IEP, you have to make sure that you're meeting, meeting the needs of your students and giving your case, case situation. They may make it up on a certain day if they have to, or they set it up that day.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's hard to be able to say exactly.
Mrs. Cooper?
I just wanted to follow up on a couple of comments. Okay. First, I agree with the board members who said that the half-day on May 22nd, I just really don't, I don't see the justification for that, especially with that Tuesday off. And then also just to the point of the, starting earlier, having been a board member who had that discussion, we agreed that it was not a good idea or not fair, for lack of a better word, for the teachers to have to come back earlier. But I would also say anecdotally, and I'm probably going to jinx it, that in recent years, the schools have been more bearable in June than they have been in August and September, and actually at the beginning of October even for that matter. So I would be really hesitant to move any earlier back into August based on the past few years how it's been in the schools.
Other final comments? We have two, and is that it? And then Dr. Jones will make some final comments. Mr. Asa, followed by Ms. Vitale.
Forgive me for my not fully knowing this, but can you just clarify the Tuesday, contractual Tuesdays that teachers stay late? Can you just give me an idea of what's entailed with that?
You might, Mr. Cummings, you might want to speak to the schedule you guys set out at the beginning of the year, on Tuesdays, extended Tuesdays?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. I was looking for a world-wide...
I was just curious on, if you could give us just a summary on the, on the extended Tuesdays and what's accomplished there versus, and why some of these half-day PDs can't be done at that time?
A few things. Just for example, speaking to today, the elementary worked on a longer data exercise around the growth data that was presented to you tonight. That would be difficult to do in the hour, hour and a half that's often done. Another advantage we have, I met with science, the high school sci, the high school departments met today. The longer time minimizes the impact of travel time. The travel time is a greater issue at the middle and elementary. So having a longer time together will minimize that impact. The...
Sorry, that just went right over my head. Can you clarify what you're saying?
Exactly. Given if, if we're trying to bring teachers together from different buildings, when we have an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, the travel time that is required negatively impacts, we wind up with far reduced time to meet. A longer period of time in the afternoon allows us more time together. Today, for example...
Let me just, to that point, so is this a convenience thing for the teachers, or is it a contractual thing?
No, it's not a convenience thing. It, well...
I mean, just, I'm pure, I'm totally curious. I like...
I don't know what you mean by "it" though in that sentence.
So, so they're, they're, I guess, required on a Tuesday to stay till a certain time, right?
That's right.
Okay. So if they're required to be there at a certain time, you're saying on the half-days, they get a little extra time on the, on the earlier side because they're leaving at the same time?
They, well, what they, what the half-days allows us to do is have more prolonged, meaningful professional learning. So for example, the high school departments right now, all of our high school departments are working to revise their final exams. We need all the teachers in the high schools together by courses to do that. Bless you. So the time today allowed for the extended time they needed. For example, I was working with the science teachers, well, it's an overstatement to say I was working with them. They were doing the work. But they, because they're implementing new next-generation science standards, there's a lot of research they have to do into test items to create more vital exams. So the, the longer period of time allows for more meaningful collaborative work than often what happens on a Tuesday when it's rushed. Quite honestly, the other issue we face on many of our Tuesdays is when our teachers have worked a full day is trying to provide professional learning when everybody's exhausted is, is often a very much uphill battle. And we, while we try to spend as much time in meaningful work or work that's meaningful for the teachers' instructional practice, you know, they, they spent, whether they spend the day with 25 elementary kids or with 125 high school kids, it, they can be shot. So getting them at an earlier hour, around 1 o'clock in the afternoon, leads to more productive sessions as well.
So would you say that maybe one or two of these half-days, it's inconceivable that the work there could be done on, on a Tuesday or two throughout the year?
Is it inconceivable? I, I will tell you, we have a high expectation in the district about any of our professional development time, and we recognize that when the board provides us with that, we have an obligation to use it to the absolute fullest. So I, I think I can clearly speak for all of our administrators when we say that that time needs to be well-spent in professional learning for staff, that people are truly engaged in the work, that the work is meaningful to their instructional practice. It's something we take very seriously and are committed to.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying all that because I really was interested in your answers. So I guess my next question is, if a couple of these half-days were just removed, what impact, in your opinion, I mean, obviously you're going to advocate for, for these days, but could we be able, are we contractually time-wise? I mean, I know we have, Dr. Jones said the five days, but I'm just curious if we could, if we could eliminate some of them and still...
And that's a question to the superintendent or to her staff if she wants to go there.
I'd actually, that's one of the notes I was going to make just on a couple of things, but I think it's important for the board to know the calendar that we used to have was not meeting our needs, and it was not. And that is why we came to the board and at the end of 1617 and asked, and it's either three or four, and I wish I knew the number, I just off the top of my head can't remember exactly. All of the other early releases, other than that Memorial Day, were already part of our calendar. I mean, this is a calendar from 1314, and you look, October has always had four or five days. Just because you've got two holidays that can fall in that month, or it'll be September, October, it's challenging. But our calendar was not meeting our needs. And what, the work that you saw happening tonight and the results that our staff are getting, we can't expect them to... tonight and the results that our staff are getting, we can't expect them to do that if we're not going to give them the professional time. Now, it doesn't mean there aren't other creative ways to solve this problem, you know, and that's why I say, I look at Greenwich and they have 187 staff, staff days, the same that we have, but 180 instructional days. So if this board wants to say, parents, we're going to give you your kids, but it can't be the last two days of the year because that's not productive. So if they'd rather have them home for a full day instead of half-days, I mean, that's something we could look at, but there has to be some way to get professional development because I really feel like the only way it was really in the calendar, it was my, I'd only been here a semester, but in 1617, the night it was on the agenda, we had a whole group of teachers that happened to be here on another issue and they all came up to the microphone passionately that night and said, "We need this and here's why." And I, I feel like, you know, it's, it's something that makes our calendar, um, really work and I don't consider early release, I consider it, um, really acknowledging the professional work that we're asking our teachers to do. And I, and I get it on the parent's side, but I, I am like Ms. Leeper and that the last district I was in, it was every Wednesday, every single Wednesday. And we're not asking for that, we're asking for three or four additional days that we feel like we really need to accomplish the work with our teachers.
And, and just to follow up since she answered my question, so I, you know, again, I'm, I'm not as much hung up on the parent inconvenience aspect of it as I am the interruption instructional time, but I, I would personally rather see another couple full days of professional development. Um, that parents, yeah, so if we're talking parent inconvenience, yeah, it's probably, they're going to take the whole day off versus, you know, trying to figure out how to get out of work a couple hours early. But based on what Mr. Cummings just said, it seems to me like if these teachers could have a couple extra full days, I mean, I know half-days they're getting the extra time versus a Tuesday, but if they could have a couple full days where they're not doing instruction prior to their professional development, I don't know. To me, it seems that may be an effective, you know, thing to possibly look at.
Ms. Vitale?
I also looked at the calendar 2013, 2014, and one of the biggest differences I saw were the addition of the half-days prior to holiday weekends, which I would be curious to know what the absentee rates were on those days, just to begin with, that I suspect that some kids are already being pulled out of school and I suspect that many families actually like those half-days. Now the February break is gone, MLK is a long weekend, there's a professional development day before, the four-day weekend in February. So just something to keep in mind as we're saying what we're adding. We're adding those professional days at a time that is beneficial to families and builds family time. If you want to make it a full day, maybe look at those days because that would extend vacation, still be PD, we'd be shortening the school year, but maybe those days are not, maybe a lot of kids are absent anyway. Um, another thought, I agree with May 22nd, I don't see the need for that, especially for high schoolers, not every high schooler is taking the AP exam, those that are taking finals, they're still in the thick of it. I'm not loving the May 26th for the same reason, but I, I, you know, appreciate the value and defer to staff on that. And my last comment would really be these conference days, the three in October and the three, you know, in March, April, they're disruptive and I'm not saying they're absolutely important, you know, parents need to meet with their children's teachers, but I would be curious to know if there's been any kind of brainstorming of another way of using that time. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Did I see a hand go up over, okay. So Ms. Pitco followed by Mrs. Jacobson.
I want to thank everybody for their questions and their clarification because when I first looked at this calendar, I just thought the dates were all over the place. I, I understand the Tuesdays and needing that extended time. My real frustration with it is in October, March, and May. And I know I said that previously and I was the first person to speak, but I truly believe that October and March are the days where the parents are inconvenienced the most, the instructional time is just broken up. Um, I, I said it before, I definitely think we need to look at how conferences are done, I mean, over three days. There's two weeks in October where the kids have three full days. I mean, I don't know how much learning's going on, how as an educator I would continue my lessons, I got a day off, then I have a half-day, then the next week I've only got a couple days and the week after that I got another day off. That's too disruptive. So, um, and then, you know, I go back to, I agree, May 22nd, the half-day, I just, I don't see the point. If parents are going to take their students out, they're going to take their students out, but we need that time, especially as the year's wrapping up.
And, uh, is Ms. Jacobson the last commentator? I guess not.
Kind of, kind of, one comment.
Is following up on Ms. Pitco's comment or not?
Kind of, yeah. It'll be quick.
Just another thing about October, um, years ago, we didn't have Yom Kippur as a holiday.
It moves around.
No, but I don't think that we, we had Rosh Hashanah.
And Yom Kippur.
Oh, yeah, we did. Okay. Sorry.
Uh, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, two, two statements, one on the calendar, one not. I was just curious with the extradition of half-days, we're still covering the same amount of curriculum, but with less time with teachers in the classroom. So I'm just curious with the less time with students, does that mean an increase in intensity of the instruction? Or how do we compensate for the less time with students? Because I get a little worried about increased intensity, um, with less time in the classroom on our students.
So can I clarify that that's the, that's the last board comment and I'll ask Dr. Jones to make some comments based on the discussion. Um, did you have other comments, Ms. Jacobson?
Well, I was going to let her answer that, but then, yeah, I said that I had one more on a date, so that's, will be the final one for me anyway. Sorry.
Well, why don't you ask, why don't you ask it now so she can address all of the comments?
Oh, okay. And I'll just pitch it out there that I really would prefer the June 12th rather than the June 15th, only because I feel like, you know, there are snow days and I get that you will probably go into that week anyway, but it, for me, it just pushes us into, especially last year, we had seven snow days that would push us into the next possible June week. So, you know, I just think June 12th is probably ideal, but that's just, I'd rather end on that day if possible. Anyway.
Uh, Dr. Jones?
Um, I think what the board is seeing when you look at the calendar is, it, this is like hours and hours of work and so many different eyes in the district that look at this because there are so many different competing interests. Um, when you look at, you know, talking about the time that's missed in instruction or the intensity, I think that when teachers have the opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues, they are more prepared to walk into the classroom and teach effectively. So if they know that they're working on something together, I, I think it, even though they've lost that little bit of time, those three or four afternoons, I think they're more prepared to teach because they've been working together and they're, you know, they talk about those things that if they're working in like next generation science standards, they're working together and planning the same experiments and making sure everybody's prepared. So I think that kind of overrides, rides it because they feel more prepared. When I look at conference days, I think, um, there's not going to be a lot of wiggle room. I'm just going to say that right, right now in October or April. I mean, if you're asking just to spread out the days more, but the teachers feel like, and I think our parents would say, that they really value the conference for their child. They may not like having to pick their child up early when other parents are having their conferences, but you have to, it takes time. And there's nothing worse than having a parent conference that only lasts seven minutes and they're like, "Oh, I'm sorry, it's over." And I've been in a district where it was kind of that way because that's just how the schedule worked. We don't have a lot of flexibility in that, again, if you don't do half-days in Connecticut in the way the calendar is set, you can't trade two half-days for a full day. In Connecticut, they make us count school days. Not every state's that way. Some of them let you count hours and it's much easier to have flexibility. We're days. So if we want to take off those two conference days, um, then we're going to have to, you know, and have those as full days and we're going to take the 11th and have a conference day all day, that's not an instructional day. So you can't count a full day of conferences as instructional day. So now you're pushing us back farther in June, which we just said gets really hot and we don't want to be, have that in June. So right now with our conferences, this is the way that the calendar is set. Now, if the board wants for 2021 and us to work with FEA, is there a different way we could approach that, approach that? Um, possibly, and maybe it's coming back to the board and having fewer instructional days so that we can have conferences different and not have as many early releases for that. But that's a, that's a difficult one. Um, and I just did want to point out, two of the early releases that were added that were new, October 22nd and March 10th, were both put on a Tuesday, uh, which were those extended days and just trying to really make use, uh, good use of that time. Um, and again, I just, I want to reiterate that you can't trade a half for a full because that, we lose the instructional day. So that is a huge piece of this calendar to not push us into June. Um, I think that's it.
Um, I'll, uh, remind the board that this will be on for a vote in November and probably of all of the votes that we take, um, coming to the board table for, uh, how about if we change this day and, and some other board member wants to change another day, um, there are so many ripple effects in the school calendar that if you do have a specific proposal that you want to make, um, it is essential that you get it to the superintendent in advance so that she can check with her staff to see, uh, if we do this, what ripple effect does it have? Because that is hard to identify at a board table, uh, but it's, uh, better addressed if there's time for staff to, to look at all of the various components of it. So, uh, so if you do have a proposal, please, uh, bring it to the superintendent as soon as you can. This will be on for a November vote. Uh, moving on to general education, pre-K enrollment process, Dr. Jones?
And I was hesitant to put this on just because it says pre-K, I thought we may have a whole roomful of people. This has nothing really to do necessarily with the conversation we had a few months ago, we're still working on that. This is really talking about, um, how we enroll pre-K and how we're going to utilize our sections. And from a management standpoint, what we would like to do is look at our section that we have at Stratfield and look at our section that we have at Burr and put those under the ECC umbrella. And when we look at why both of those Gen Ed pre-Ks were put in place, it was really part of the racial imbalance plan to help solve racial imbalance. And I think that we've had it in long enough to know, does it help a little? Yes. Does it solve racial imbalance? No. So we're at the point now where we're really needing additional sections for ECC. So we can either stay the course and have two Gen Ed pre-Ks, um, just because that's what the board wants to do, or we take those two Gen Ed pre-Ks and we enroll them under the ECC umbrella, which is going to allow us to lower our caseload, um, for our ECC teachers, um, and be able to hopefully have more of our, our peer ratio where we would like to be and it would be moving in that direction. The one thing I can't tell you is would those two programs stay at Burr and Stratfield? That depends on the following discussion. But I needed to bring this to the board tonight because we start enrolling for pre-K in January, February. It starts very early. And so we would be looking at those two becoming ECC classes, which means we're looking at enrolling, uh, more peers and working on that peer ratio. So it's really just for me to get comments from the board, um, about, you know, what your thoughts are on doing that, but it, it has an economic savings for us and I do not feel like it, um, impacts us negatively whatsoever. That's why I gave you the information I did, I think it was in Friday packet, just about pre-K in general.
Uh, Ms. Pitco?
That's the history on why they were at Burr and Stratfield. I mean, I remember there was originally one at Dwight, right?
Well, they, they were really put in for racial balance and that's, and it was if we strategically put these pre-Ks at these buildings, will students want to go to those buildings, enroll and then stay, uh, in those environments? And I don't know particularly why Burr, I know with Dwight, for instance, that's why we moved it because it wasn't working and somebody here may have more history about originally why.
Um, which would you compete with? Ms. Gerber for history or you?
I'm happy to, I can give a quick snapshot answer, but go ahead, Mrs. Gerber.
Well, my understanding was that Dwight was because there was space at the time and I believe the same with Burr, although also I think with Burr, there was, um, a sense that, uh, since you, there was the wanting to draw students from McKinley, uh, Burr has the same feeder as McKinley, whereas Dwight did not. So as a result, bless you, um, Dwight, um, was not as successful i- in that sense as Burr was and hence that was the decision to then move from Dwight to Stratfield because Stratfield also shares the same feeder as McKinley. Um, so there was, there was a better chance of attracting students because they may be going to the same middle school and high school as the people they'd been in elementary school with as opposed to if they were at Dwight, they would then be moving, they wouldn't be in the same feeder for middle and high school.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Maxine Connelly and Ms. Vitale, right?
Uh, yeah, and that's part of what I was going to say, also with Stratfield, it was thought that the proximity, obviously you know this, that the proximity to McKinley would make it then less daunting than the drive across town to, uh, Dwight, although I don't believe that they had to, not for the high school or maybe for the middle school, I'm not, I think they deferred, didn't they return to their previous, oh, that's, I'm sorry, for students who, um, opted into McKinley, they had to return to their original feeder pattern, but if you opted out of McKinley into the pre-K, you would go with your new school's feeder pattern.
It, it depends how far back you go. Before I started, we had actually made the adjustment where if you went to pre-K, you could stay for, for Cape 5, but you had to go back to your feeder pattern. That was part of the thought process that, that's one of the reasons it wasn't working as well as maybe initially, but the busing cost was overtaking really the, um, the value of trying to get that to work when it really wasn't bringing down the ratio at McKinley a great deal.
Um, Ms. Vitale?
Well, just some more about Burr. I think if memory serves, it was also a new school, McKinley was a relatively new school and in terms of an incentive for preschoolers to go there, why would you leave brand-new McKinley? Well, if you were going to brand-new Burr, you might be more likely to do that than going to a school like Dwight that doesn't have air conditioning and is, you know, maybe not as an interactive, um, you know, building.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, so my feelings on pre-K is that although it was implemented in part at least to address possibly racial imbalance, and I understand it hasn't been incredibly helpful on that front, I do strongly feel though that we do have a certain degree, two-thirds of which of our pre-K students that are either free tuition or reduced tuition, for which pre-K is incredibly profoundly important for them to be prepared for, at least as best as we can, those students for kindergarten who may not be able to go to a private setting. So while this is an initial conversation on that, I think that my advocacy will be that there's needs to be an option to make sure that we are not only using pre-K for racial imbalance's purposes, but just because it is a best practice to ensure, especially for our more at-risk populations who may not be in special ed and ECC, but still need a preparation in maybe threes or fours at least before coming into kindergarten if possible. So that's just my feeling out of the gate on that.
Uh, any other further comments? So I've got Ms. Leeper and Ms. Vitale and Ms. Pitco.
Uh, just a question, I agree that that's really important to keep an eye on, but is there any reason we couldn't continue to do that and have those be, um, non-disabled peers at the ECC?
Well, well, that is, that's what the enrollment process would change is that right now you can elect, "I want to be in Gen Ed preschool at Stratfield or Burr," now you want to be in preschool.
Yeah.
So we have eight sections and it really benefits all children because, you know, for our general education preschool, they're having a better experience in a balanced classroom and it really helps our ECC teachers to bring, and we've made a commitment and I'm, you know, I know the board has heard this, but about getting our, our caseload numbers really set, not only for pre-K, but just looking at that pre-K through 12 and Mr. Mancusi's been working hard on that, but this is a step in the right direction for pre-K. Um, right now their class, their caseloads are too large, their classes are too large and they don't have the peer ratio. So when you talk about our pre and reduced students, they would still have option to be in pre-K. It's just one program instead of trying to operate two.
Thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Vitale?
And it really was the same thing. I support this, um, we discussed it, I think you and I discussed it, we discussed it at the focus group when we met at the ECC, that it would just, it's a preschool. All of our preschools are together, we're going to meet the needs of everyone that enrolls and they're, well, we'll find out where they're all going to be, but, um, I think this is a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Pitco?
So that means that as of right now, we need outside of the space at the ECC at least three more sections?
Um, yes, we need it anyway. Yeah.
So I would prefer that that be at one location rather than between Burr and Stratfield.
I, I think that that's, that's why I'm bringing it up to the board tonight, just to make sure that everybody understands kind of where we're moving. We're looking at all the facilities pieces, um, I believe we're back in the board, is it, um, it's October, November, I think we're back in front for the November meeting. So hopefully we'll be a little bit farther along, I mean, that, that's our goal as well. So we're looking at all of the facilities components that go along with it. That's why I say I can't commit that you're going to be at Burr right now, but hopefully by December we'll be farther down the trail on knowing what's available and what that looks like. So our goal is to keep at a minimum, uh, having two clusters. You know, if you have ECC, it's trying to have teachers together, again, for what we
talked about tonight, so they can all collaborate and work together and services are better.
One of the other factors, one year, we slipped under the 25%. And in large part, that was because of the preschools. So it was effective one out of eight years, that's it. But operation of those preschools is at an expense. And at the time, when it was first thought of, you got a kind of a twofer. You had a prospect of resolving racial imbalance, and you were also taking a step toward universal pre-K. But it is at an expense. And so if we find that it is not that helpful in the original purpose of it, then it is time to kind of take stock of where we're going with, with the pre-K program. Any final comments that you wish to give guidance on? Any final comments? Is this?
Sorry.
Ms. Leeper.
As you are able to, to get more information about the facilities component, will we have an opportunity to discuss on that before you need like our final, I don't know, is this going to be a voting item or this is just a discussion item?
To be honest, to me, from my perspective, this was really a management item of how we enroll our students. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of what I was doing and that, why we're doing it. Because if I didn't, if I wasn't changing the way we're enrolling right now, I would be needing to build into the budget two or three additional sections of preschool, which comes with a significant cost when I feel like we really have a way to manage that and be much more effective. And I, and we all feel like it'll actually be a better program.
So I guess just as more information becomes known, just to continue the dialogue about this program?
Pitco. I realize you just said that it comes at a cost, but we do charge students, there is a revenue that comes with it, and there is an educational component, there, ECC students were atypical students. That was part of the argument we just made about putting the sections together. I didn't want to end on a note of saying that this is all at a cost. I thought that was a bad way to end this.
Well, what I'm saying is that we, we need more sections for ECC. So we have right now eight in the district, but only six are ECC, under the ECC umbrella. So we either add and go from eight to 10 or even 11 sections of preschool, which, because we're wanting to keep that Gen Ed program the way that it is, or we take those two classes and we make that part of our ECC program. That's what I mean by the, the cost analysis of it. The pre-K program, I think when it was initially put in, because we charged tuition, we were looking at it generating that $4,000 per student. That's not actually what the history shows in pre-K, and that's because we do have families who are on the free and reduced. And so our average, the really revenue that we bring in is about $40,000, so it really doesn't even cover the cost of the teacher. So, you know, when we have a peer program, you're still collecting that same tuition from those families who are able to pay.
Ms. Jacobson, was your hand up?
I just wanted to clarify. So you don't anticipate any drop in number, it's just how it's being housed. We would still be able to take those same numbers that we're taking right now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So we'll move on to BOE goal discussion. There's no action contemplated tonight, just that Mr. Acer asked what hap, what is going to happen with those leftover goals? So I had the staff assemble them so that we would know which ones are still open for discussion. And where you see two names there, it's not that the, Mr. Acer and Ms. Jacobson got together on this goal, but rather we, they were the same subject, so two sentences were combined into a single one, so that you knew the subject was the same. And so I guess either one of two things. Of course, my viewpoint always is that you don't want to bite off more than you can chew. We have a substantial facilities goal to deal with, and we have a special education audit to deal with, and that perhaps that's enough for this year. But the board really has to decide that, and as to whether they want to continue to look at this and then choose another one or two from this list, or whether they're happy where they are. But I promised Mr. Acer that they wouldn't get lost to history, so they're here. And if there are any board, and if any board members want to comment at this precise moment, feel free to do that, because it's on for discussion.
Well, just opening the floor for conversation, I mean, I think there's two, you know, things maybe we might want to discuss, and that is whether or not this board wants to entertain the idea of some sort of a special working, you know, group or meeting going forward for more discussion items, because that seems to be coming up a couple of times here and there. And then also, you know, it may not be on this list specifically, but I think we just have, you know, a lot of work to do on facilities and maintenance, and it's not necessarily, besides goal number one, that is very specific to certain programming and maybe redistricting, there isn't really anything in here about facilities and maintenance. So I'm raising that, even though it's not in here, so I apologize for adding another thing to the table, but I think that maybe that'd be two ideas maybe we want to talk about.
Yeah, I think the, as we go through the budget process, both capital and operating, I think that that's, especially when board members should raise his issues around facility concerns, and do we have enough money set aside to address what, whatever they are. For those of you who have remembered to see the waterfall chart, the Board of Education alone has about $100 million of projects on that chart. So we, we don't want for things that we need to do, we just don't have the capacity as a town to finance it all in one year. But that, that would be an important topic to, to raise during the budget process. Number four and number eight, I will say, are, both require some bylaw adjustment to implement those. And so rather than say that it's a board goal, every November, we do address bylaws. And for those who would want to pursue number four and number eight, the process we have used in the past is in November, at the organizational meeting, you raise the concept that you might want to proceed with this, and then by the December meeting, you submit an officially written bylaw change so that the board can get the notice in advance that is required by our bylaws. And the board can clearly say what words you're taking out and what words you're adding, and Mrs. Brown can help you with that format of presenting. So number four and number eight, I think probably could be addressed at that point. Any other comments that board members wish to make? Ms. Leeper.
I think that's a great suggestion about waiting till November. And if any other board members are interested in some combination of four and eight, or in a bylaw change, I'd be happy to, to work on, on some language like that. I'm not married to this. I took the SMART goal language suggestion very literally and wanted something concrete, but it's more like the spirit of, of an opportunity to have more discussion. And so if anyone else is interested in that, feel free to, to reach out.
Any other comments on, on the board goals? Thank you for that discussion, and we'll move on to, the next item is E. It's on for action at the same meeting it's being introduced. I'll explain why in a second. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the authorized signers listed in ED-099, the Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs. Do I have a motion? Ms. Gerber, followed by Ms. Vitale. This is a time-sensitive form that has to be filled out, and it's one that we fill out year after year after year. And so that's why it's on for immediate action to meet the deadline and that it's not a new thing. Any conversation or questions that you would want to address to the superintendent or to Ms. Muncell, if she's the one that deals with this? Any questions? It's a voting item. Any member of the public wish to talk about the child nutrition program? Seeing nobody come forward, the motion before you is that the Board of Education approve the authorized signers listed in ED-099, the Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And on to approval of the minutes, that the Board of Education approve the special minutes of September 11th, 2018, October 9th, 2018, the one at 5:45, October 9th, 2018, the one at 6:45, and the regular minutes of September 11th, 2018. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have a, a couple of things tonight. First of all, the Ward-Turf Field was able to open for their first football game, which was great, and special thanks to Mr. Cullen and all of his staff. That took a tremendous amount of, of work. Also, just to congratulate again Osborne Hill on their diversity day, several of us were there for that. It was just, it was just amazing. I mean, I learned something. And when you're an adult and you go and you learn, you know the children are, so it was fantastic. Fairfield Ward also, their Equity Task Force just presented at NIESC, and, you know, they're really becoming known around the state. Last year, you remember they presented in San Diego, just still continuing to do some really great work, and so we're very proud of them. I want to point out, you do have the budget planning, and just two, two pages I'll point out for you. On page 19, where you see the elementary sections, it does have us going down four sections next year. That's just always something to point out. Generally, that is done through natural attrition. As you know, people have babies, don't return, people retire, so that just, to kind of put that out there so people don't worry about seeing, it's not a huge reduction. And also on page 15, I just want to point out, generally you wouldn't see the high school in yellow, and I just want to explain what that is. When we go in and we look at the allocation, we do our allocation per student. But the one trend we had a little bit last year and more so this year, and definitely this year, Melona McBroom, we had a discussion with them about this. Our ninth graders did not leave us, we believe, for private school like they have in the past. And so both of our high schools saw an increase in enrollment. After the year has started, it's almost impossible for us to go back and reconfigure people's allocations, because what would happen is an elementary who enrolled 20 students less, you'd be taking money away, and their budgets aren't that large that it really, it causes havoc for them. So what we've done this year is the number that is in this book is a little bit larger than what is projected. It's based on their actual right now, even though their projected is lower. So we're trying to accommodate for that going into next year to help, help our high schools a little bit. So I just wanted to point out what that was.
Okay. Any other, any other report?
Yeah, the last thing I just want to mention, obviously, I messaged the board today about Dwight. We've had quite a few emails about Dwight and kind of how that project is going. Woodard and Curran are scheduled to have their parent meeting, community meeting next Tuesday evening, meeting with teachers at the close of the day, just with the teachers. We were going to wait and get through that meeting to see what feedback we got. We really hadn't heard much until really yesterday. There were a lot of parent concerns that came in, especially I would say last night, this morning. So we called Woodard and Curran again, asked them if they would come out for us to do the next layer of testing. Wasn't recommended by them because from their process, and again, they're the experts, that's why we rely on them in the health department, the first testing they do is the visual inspection, and we actually gave them some very specific room numbers that were reported to us from the principal and from the teachers that they wanted to look at, as well as other areas. They come out, they go into those spaces, they look at them, they literally cut into the wall and put a scope inside so they can see if there's infiltration of mold or anything else. Could be water dripping down the wall that they want to let us know could be causing an odor. They did that assessment, they did not find anything that would rise to that next level. We sent all of that report out to the community, but the community is still concerned. And really, what most people hear about is the air kind of testing, but if you don't have the visibility inside the wall and it's not infiltrating, they generally don't do that. We've asked them to do that. They're going to come back out on Thursday. With technology now, it's actually much faster than it used to be. They believe they'll be able to get us the results by Monday, which means when we have our community meeting on Tuesday, we can give them that much more information and also have more information for the teachers. But I also, some of the emails that I saw, there were people, I think who believe the principal's not reporting things, which we all know, that's how social media is, it can be pretty harsh. She has been in contact with our staff literally every day, as well as our team is over there. They're, you know, listening to teacher concerns, but anytime you have a building that people think could be unhealthy, it scares people. And so we, we recognize that, we're being responsive to it, and I just, I want to say that publicly as much as, you know, anything, but also for the board. We're doing everything that we know to do, listening to the experts in the field, and we'll continue to do that. And the letter I sent out, you know, to, to the parents tonight, you know, if we got to a point where a building is unhealthy and we need to move 300 odd kids, we'll move them. There is no reason for us to not take action. We just are working with the experts to help us, guide, guide us through it, so.
Questions on the topics raised by the superintendent? Ms. Vitale, followed by Ms. Le, wait, no, Ms. Vitale.
Are Woodard and Curran going to do air testing in just the rooms that they visited the last time around, or is it going to be in a broader area of the school?
I might ask Mr. Cullen. We just got the proposal late today. Do you want to address the proposal?
Tom Cullen, Executive Director, Operations. They provided another proposal to do those specific rooms, so eight, 10, 15, and 17, and they want to do some other background ones. So I think they picked four others. I don't have them off the top of my head, the numbers. And then they have to do outdoors near those locations.
At how many locations?
I want to say there's eight classrooms and two or three outdoor.
And I will say from, I think we've all been through it before that are in schools, but that's very typical. Some parents tend to want you to do every single classroom. They don't do that. They always do zones of a building. That's, that's the way they assess. But we're making sure that the rooms that people were really concerned about were on the first testing, and then they're on this one again, just to, to be doubly sure.
So they'll do both wings? They'll, because weren't some of the rooms?
They are actually in both wings, yeah.
And both, like, front and back? Like both, I just, you know, I don't want, I don't want us to have to revisit this again that we tested, but we only did the back corner and on one side? And the air, outside air is just a comparative with the inside of the building is, as opposed to what the mold testing is in the outside? Is that why they do outside?
They do an outdoor sample because they want to see what type of mold spores are growing.
In the environment.
And are around outside in the environment. Then they do the indoors to hopefully see the same type of species at lower levels.
Right. And does there need to be any sort of, does the building need to be prepped at all? Do they have to close the building to do this testing to get an accurate rating?
No, I talked to them about that. They said it's a five-minute air test. It used to be a 24-hour, and it is a little loud. They prefer it with the students gone, they don't care if the staff are there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Acer, followed by Ms. Pitco.
Mr. Cullen, while you're there, so just for clarification, if you could just enlighten us with regards to the, and then what Dr. Jones said, and they cut in the wall, look for infiltration, but when there is a situation where there may be something referred to like surface mold, is, would, would effects of that also show up on this air quality test? Like is this, does this cover the full gamut?
What I understand from my years of experience is if there's mold in the building, it's going to be picked up in the air sample. Doesn't matter where it is.
But every building has mold, and that's, that's the thing that's always a challenge.
I mean, I have surface mold on the windows in my house, so, but obviously, this, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I do. It keeps coming back. That's why I'm sniffling, no.
Mr. Acer, this tape is kept, is kept for decades.
So, okay, so, but that's what I'm getting at. So, so this air quality testing is, is, really encompasses everything there. So with regards to the community meeting you mentioned, so you said the community meeting, but then you said there was going to be a meeting for teachers right after, but there is a community meeting at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, we haven't even advertised the teachers meeting. I just emailed them directly, but, so they didn't have to stay after work for, you know, just trying to be convenient to parent hours at 6:00 o'clock, but theirs is actually right after school, and the same team will be there, and then they're going to stay to do the commu, and they could stay for both meetings if they want to.
And, and are members of the community that don't necessarily have a child at Dwight welcome to join that meeting?
It's a community meeting, so if somebody, the only thing I would say, I hope that we don't have droves, because I think there'll be so many Dwight parents that have an interest, and it's not a huge space.
But if maybe some board members want to attend, they're welcome?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, sure.
Ms. Pitco.
My question is through the chair, I think, to Mr. Cullen. Can you explain to me, one of the things I read was about that there was water seeping through the tiles or the flooring at Dwight?
No, not seeping through, it was surface water. And it wasn't just Dwight, there were several schools we saw this when it got really damp and humid, which is something I haven't seen in the 17 years I've been here either, but we had some surface water on the corridor floors.
Okay, my other question was, what was the role of Fairfield Board of Health in all of this?
The, he, sans- Sands Cleary is one of the people that we call first and foremost, because, you know, he's the one that helps also, helps guide us on which company to use. That was one of the questions we had for him, because Mr. Cullen has been in town long enough and used many different companies here, and one of the questions we asked Sands was about, you know, who should we use, and Woodard and Curran has done work in the town before, so he helps with that. One of the first calls I think you made this morning, when we were talking about it, was to Sands again about the next level of testing, so Mr. Cleary's been, you know, instrumental to help us and guide us to make sure, and that, sorry.
No, that's okay, I was wondering who makes the call then to close a school, if they do find mold or something else on Monday.
Well, you know, honestly, when the Health Department is involved, if they think that a building is unsafe, they're going to tell me, I don't have a choice, and we're going to call school off until, whether it's a day or five days till you figure it out. Certainly, we, you know, if we felt like a building was unsafe, we would have already called school off, but right now, we rely on those professionals, but they would tell us we need to close it if it's unsafe.
Any other comments on the superintendent's report? Seeing none, committee and liaison reports? Ms. Pitco.
So I have a report for SEPTA this month, actually tomorrow is our next meeting, it's at 7:30 at the Fairfield Ludlow High School Library. Shelley, I'm going to mess up her last name, I'm going to apologize, Mica Lucy, who is the Medicaid School Based Services Coordinator for Fairfield, shall provide an overview for the Medicaid billing process in regards to students receiving services under the Fairfield Special Education Umbrella via an IEP or a 504, and then she'll be available for, to answer parent questions. This Saturday, the 27th, at Double Up Dance, from 2:00 to 4:00, there's a Halloween Hijinks, come in costume. There is a movie premiere for Changing the Perception of Intellectual Disability, the screening is when? Is tomorrow, at Wilton Bowtie Cinemas, the tickets cost $12. After-school Chill, which happens actually through Fairfield Parks and Rec, K through 12, meets Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And then we have the Best Buddies Program through Ludlow or WARM, Ward Teen, it says to register your child online. And TGIS, Student Drop-In on Saturdays, ages 13 to 20.
Thank you. Ms. Leeper?
Just a real quick note, that we're going to be rescheduling the next Finance Committee because it falls on Election Day. And I was just waiting for confirmation that it will work for Central Office to do it the following Tuesday, but that will, the agenda will be posted, per usual, just...
Ms. Tal, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Sherman Building Committee, I'm trying to think, Silver Petricelli is the architect, they are busy at work already, they are looking at just doing some walkthroughs of the building, doing some initial plans right now for the bus loop and the kiss and drop line. They did initial look at the mechanical system, not, working on how the air conditioning's going to work at that school right now, and that's it.
Ms. Gerber?
The Ludlow Building Committee will be having what perhaps may be its second-to-last meeting ever, on November 14th, and the plan is for Mark Donald, the Building Committee Chair, to come to this board for our December 11th meeting, to have us accept the project as complete. My understanding is then they need to go to the Board of Selectmen to have the Building Committee dissolve, so I'm assuming that could perhaps be December 19th. So, and just as a little history, the Board of Education approved the ed specs, or received the ed specs for the Fairfield Ludlow Project in January of 2013, approved them in February of 2013, so we're almost at six years, so I'm really hoping that this may actually wrap up. Milhill, which is just starting, just to, they, Silver Petricelli's going to be really busy, because they are also the Milhill architect, and so they are going to be busy at work, and the Building Committee canceled their regular meeting for tomorrow night, and will be meeting next on November 14th, which is going to be a really busy night, because that's also Ludlow's meeting as well, so I'm not quite sure how I'm going to do that, or Sal, for that matter. Okay, thanks.
Any committee liaison reports on this side of the table? Seeing none? On to open board comment, any open board comment from, we'll start on this side of the table and go the other way. Open board comment, open board comment? Ms. Leeper?
I feel like I filled my quota of talking after missing last meeting. Just a really quick thank you, this is coming from a parent who doesn't have kids in the Fairfield Public Schools yet, but thanks to our firefighter fighters who go around to our daycares and pre-K schools and do fire safety and education, and it was totally like the best part of my son's life, probably. He told me he drove the fire truck today, but I just want to say thanks to our firefighters and our police, who always find ways to engage with our youth, and then follow up on Diversity Day that I had the pleasure to attend. And then also wanted to just thank Mr. Maricuzzi for the ECC Roundtable, and I found that really informative and a nice opportunity to exchange ideas.
Ms. Pitco.
I'm really excited to say, I just agreed to be the Chair of the Diversity Day at Burr.
And my only, as you know, I've always said, the minutes should only show action, not comment, but I think the minutes ought to record that the bottom of the sixth, that's Dodgers three and Red Sox five. Anyways, a public comment, anybody, member of the public, wish to come forward and address us on an item before the, on the agenda? Any member of the public wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Bob Smoller, President of the FBA, I just wanted to return to one item regarding the calendar. We have a lot of initiatives in this district, and, you know, to Mr. Ace's point from before, you know, we had just Tuesday afternoon meetings for a long time, and we could not get our initiatives executed with any fidelity whatsoever with that little amount of PD. The PD that's being offered today gives us a running shot at possibly implementing some of these new initiatives that we have going on, like Chromebooks and NGSS, and there's about 50 others that are going on that you don't even discuss at the board table. If we don't have these PD periods available to us, you know, we really don't have a shot at getting these things implemented properly. So I know it's an inconvenience to parents, it's an inconvenience to some of the teachers too, you know, because it pulls them away from their other work, but we really do need this time in order to be able to get these initiatives executed, which are part of the District Improvement Plan. And I do want to emphasize again, the lack of PD that was in the schedule before made it impossible to implement any initiatives that we had in place, and in fact, initiatives would just come and go, we'd do some work on it, and then they'd just fall off the wayside, because we just couldn't get it done in any kind of proper manner. So I wish you would take that into consideration as you think about the calendar moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With no further business, the recommended motion is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Ms. Gerber, followed by, seconded by Ms. Leeper, all in favor, it is unanimous, thank you very much.